Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular monthly meeting, or December 2nd, 2026, I'm sorry, 2025, regular monthly meeting of the Planning Board. We will start with role. Alan Myers?
Yep.
Cheryl Valentine?
Here.
Dick Taylor?
Here.
Rosemary Eva?
Present.
I'm Bill Gerlach. Stu Hardy?
Here.
So not with us tonight is VA Lopes, as well as Adam Raposa and Janice Gomes. But we do have Quorum. So also joining us here tonight, we have Todd Romano, who is our Assistant Solicitor and Planning Board Counsel. We have Ashley Sweet, who is our interim Administrative Officer and Consulting Planner from Weston and Sampson. And we have Ed Rotella, who is our Len Use Clerk. So we have a really robust agenda this evening, punctuated by some good partnership updates from key partners from across the spectrum within town that we're excited to have here. So we are going to begin with our first agenda item this morning, not this morning. It's been a heck of a commute from near Boston, and I'm just trying to like phase in here. So this evening. So we're going to start out with item 1A, Tiverton Water District's discussion. So we're going to invite our partners from Stonebridge Water District and North Tiverton Water District up to the table to give us an update on the hydraulic model study that Stonebridge has been pushing forth for quite some time, and we are interested in that update. And then we'll also be working with both water districts to talk through some opportunities to improve how we work together as a planning board and the water districts in the interest of land development applications coming through. So in any case, with that, the fire districts want to join us, or do we want to start with Stonebridge? Hey Carl. Do you guys want to come up and start with the hydraulic model? Okay.
Wait one.
Yep.
This is like a hot seat?
Yep. Can you just make sure the red light is on so that the mic is on?
Okay.
And just for the record, let's just start with introductions for everyone.
My name's Tim Byrne. I'm the moderator of Stonebridge Fire District.
My name's Carl Destrom, some superintendent at Stonebridge.
All right. So Carl, I know you were just handing out a memo. We're here, we're going to start out with just getting an update on the hydraulic study that you guys have been working with PAR engineering on.
Yep. So the hydraulic study has been completed by PAR, and they're in the midst of producing a technical memorandum as far as what they came up with, their flow rates, and basically everything that, the information that we would need to conclude a study that is done. It will not show any individual flow rates or pressure sizes at any individual spot, because obviously, as you know, that would be done at the request of somebody, a developer or whatever, to verify that the flow would be in that area, and they have a model that they would run all the information through. But what will become available to us is just a technical memorandum of exactly what they did, what they found, and for most part, what we paid for.
And when you indicated that PAR has completed that study, when will the results of that study be in hand and shareable for consumption?
As soon as we receive that memorandum. That's, see, there's, with the hydraulic study, there are a few things that they can produce for us, one of them being this memorandum, which outlines the technical aspect of it. A second one would be, you know, if we needed one, we have one, but if we needed one, they could produce a map of the district and where everything is located. And then the actual, the actual flow rates and water pressures and water availability for any individual part of the district that you would need it. So we will only have the technical memorandum, and that's pretty much the only thing that we could release, anyway.
Okay. And what is PAR's timing for getting us?
PAR's preparing it now. Probably shouldn't take too long to prepare. We have no idea. Could take a week, could take 10 days.
I talked to Lisa Goya, who was, who developed the hydraulic model.
Okay.
And she said they're working on that. It's not her department. It goes to another department to write this up. So she was supposed to check in with them. I called her today to see what the timeline was.
Okay.
But she never called me back, so.
You know, and I just, I just want to like remind everybody that I understand the feel of urgency for this model, but we have no developments in Stonebridge area. So, you know, there's no developers knocking on the door saying, can you help us? Now, we are involved with the Souza Road project, the Blue Dog project.
Correct.
Mostly because that, although it's right on the edge of Stonebridge and North Tiverton, North Tiverton has deemed that it would be better for Stonebridge to be involved in that due to the projects that they have going on. So that's our only involvement where we would even have any, any, any model usage and, you know.
And our engineer, Rob, actually did the calculations for Blue Dog.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and that's duly noted, and as we, for folks in the audience, there's a, there's a joint fire district board that has formed, and I am now representing the planning board. It's the liaison there. We had a good constructive conversation at the last monthly meeting a few weeks ago. Yes, and we have VITAL here. That's an important input on that. We need to be able to look at that and have that available to them for them to run their study so that they can present it. That's a condition of their preliminary plan, and I know that the applicant will be coming up in a little while to continue their preliminary plan presentation.
The way it works, though, is you give us the information from the developer. I give it to my engineer. He runs it through the model, then he writes a report, then you get the report.
Sure. That's, and I want to make sure that, that you guys have what you need.
Yeah.
In order to take that.
Yep.
From the applicant, run it through the model.
Yep.
And then output what the applicant needs.
Right.
And we need.
I talked to Lisa. She said the model's up and running. If we needed it, we could use.
We could do it. We, it's a real quick turnaround to do that, if we needed that right now. So we, I guess, what I'm trying to say is that from our point of view, Stonebridge is ready to run any of the models if anybody wanted one, should somebody need one.
Okay.
You know, we could work with them to get it. I mean, it's, there's no, there's no downtime for that.
Okay.
Any models we run gets charged to develop.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, because obviously, there's a pair of charges to do that.
Okay. I'm going to pause my questions and just open it up for Ashley.
So you mentioned that you're not receiving the actual model from PAR. You're receiving the technical report.
Yep.
And they will retain the model.
Yep.
And when an applicant needs to run.
Yep.
Project through a model, PAR will do that. The applicant will get billed for that work. My question relates to the project that the town has grant funding for that's supposed to take the two models and bring them together so they can be run as one system. So in order to do that, or to be looked at.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there is connections, and I'm not professing to know all the intricacies and details, and I am not an engineer. But in order to do that work, we.
We need the model.
Weston and Sampson needs both models.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that that's going to be available. Otherwise, that project cannot be done.
Yeah, to make, to make those, those models available to anybody would certainly be a board decision to do that.
At Stonebridge.
Stonebridge, for the Stonebridge model, yeah. And we haven't had, that'll be on our agenda for our next meeting. We have been advised by our engineer that the best place to have that model would be PER, because they're the custodian for it. We own it, they're the custodian, and anybody needs it, we work with them to run the numbers for it. I would, I don't want to speak for the board. I would seriously doubt that we're going to give that model to anybody.
That would have been really good information like two years ago.
Yeah.
When we started this conversation.
Nobody talked to us two years ago about this.
Yes, we did. I sat with you.
You did. You sat, you sat down with us.
And explained the project.
You sat down with us with North Tiverton and said that money has been appropriated for a model to run it, and we said, great. Now, that indicates to me that the town's going to do something to run a model. They can't, they don't own the water districts, so they can't do it. So you'd have to come to the water districts to say, hey, listen, can we work together to do this model? That didn't happen.
We did do that. We invited you to the, to North Tiverton, to their office.
Which we did.
We went. We sat at the table, and we explained the project to you.
Yep.
And that the intent was to ultimately bring these two models together.
That's right.
So that the impacts of one system on another could be looked at, and we've been waiting for.
And you can do that. That's my point, you can do that. But to release those models, models, from our point of view, and proprietary information, which we're not really willing to give out. I mean, we've got guidance from Department of Health, and that says, you know, there's, there's proprietary information to there that poses a security threat for the water, for the water districts and the water supplies. So we would not be willing to lightly give that away. I would have to get recommendation from everybody involved to say, yeah, you can have that model before I gave it to any third party, or even recommended it to the board that we give it to a third party. The information is available, obviously, but to turn the model over, I don't know.
Yeah, so clearly, and what I would like to do is go back and look at the record to be clear on what was discussed and/or not discussed however many years ago. But I do agree with Ashley, like, that level of detailed understanding across both parties is important, and there's nothing that we can do without the critical dependency inputs of both of the models, both yours from Stonebridge and North Tiverton, in order to do the holistic assessment. And while I can appreciate the proprietary nature of that, this is something that's critical to the benefit of the whole town, our ability to look holistically across this and be able to.
Yeah.
Right? So clearly, this is not going to get situated, figured out here.
No, no.
But I mean, this is going to require some offline discussion in order to work this through, but.
Yeah.
Again, I don't understand the detail from DOH here.
Yeah, DOH, after 9/11, said we couldn't give out anything that showed flows, shut offs, anything to do with the district, basically.
Yeah.
You know, in case somebody wanted to poison the water supply.
I'm sure that we can.
Yeah, there are, there are.
There are contractual agreements we can enter into and address that without a problem.
Well, yeah, like, what do we need, like NDAs or whatever?
Yeah. Again, let's understand, we don't have any developments, and any, any developments that could affect North Tiverton is going to be governed by North Tiverton and North Tiverton's capacity to supply the water. Where they get the water from, whether it be Stonebridge or Fall River, really is mute because, you know, the water is going there, their line capacity determines how much water they can supply.
Yeah. This, this board, again, I appreciate that, but this board has a responsibility to the entire town, and in order to fulfill that responsibility to the entire town, we need all of the inputs. And in this day and age, we continue to have two water districts, two fire districts, and I don't know if we've received any sort of pushback from our North Tiverton partners on this, but like, to get their model, I'm getting a head shake, no. So we're going to have to figure out how to make this happen, and I'm sure we can put in the legal parameters to ensure safety and security and all of those requirements are met. But again, we are trying to determine a holistic view and opinion of development in this town, and we need both of them.
What do we need to do to get the permission from the Stonebridge Water Board? Do you want us to submit a letter?
Well, you would have to do that, first of all, because it's going to be a board decision whether or not to release it or not release it. And then I'll be honest with you, it would, it would require input from both our engineering and our legal.
Okay.
And that's fine, but again.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a formal request?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's probably the best place to start. I mean, we can, it's not going to stop us from putting this on our agenda for Monday.
Sure.
But, yeah, no, we, I would put it this way, I would not want to do anything without a formal opinion from both engineering and legal. I would not want, as a board member, because as a voting board member, I would not want to do that, and I would want to present that to my, my members to say that, because ultimately, at the end of the day, I understand your point of view, and I understand where you're coming from, we answer to our ratepayers.
Sure.
They pay the bill.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have to make sure that anything that we do is going to be in their best interest.
And we answer to the taxpayers, so.
Now, exactly.
There's a subset here.
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Is that correct? Why do you need both models? Can you explain that to me?
The, the, the proposed project is to look at the two models, and we understand, and again, I am not an engineer, and I, this is not my area of expertise. My understanding of it is that we need both of those models so that they can be, they can be sort of run as one system, because we know that there is connections, we know that there's a supply on your end, and we've had conversations about when, in certain areas of town, because the water is coming, I think is coming from your, your delivery side, you know, what does that do to flow, and how does that impact the entire system? So the idea being that instead of looking at this as two separate systems, because I understand from a legal perspective, they're two separate systems, but from a geographic perspective, they're, they're not. There's, there's connections in those.
Actually, they'd be three systems.
Systems.
So you have to count four or five.
Idea being to get a better sense of how those systems interplay with each other, and what that does to the availability to deliver water, we could, they could be run as one, in, in whatever capacity they.
I don't think in theory they can be run as one.
Well, we've looked at all of this, we've had multiple conversations about this. I had a meeting with PAR and Bob Ferrari, and this is the first time I have ever heard from anyone, this isn't going to work, and we can't give you the information you need. And we're like two and a half years or more into this at this point.
So here's what I'm going to recommend, because we could go around for an hour on this. So this is my sort of proposal, please feel free to weigh in here. I think we should proceed with a formal request of Stonebridge Fire District. I think we should, in that request, to, to the extent it makes sense, be able to quote from the formal project documentation. I think we should also put this on our next agenda to revisit that proposal. We'll dig up all of the paperwork on that. Hopefully, by that point in time, you guys, you're meeting on Monday with your board. By, you know, four weeks from now, we should have hopefully a bit of an update, you know, to the extent to which we can have some offline conversations, you know, to help work through some things. I think that would be important, but yeah, I mean, this is, I know this is years in the making, and, you know, we've been sitting here with a certain expectation, so. Does that sound acceptable to everyone?
I'll get the bus together.
Okay.
To attend a meeting.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go for it, Stu.
What's that going on?
Take that one, yep.
Stu Hardy, hi, thank you for coming. Just wanted to mention that the vital Souza Road project represents a major expansion of the Stone, Stonebridge Fire District, Water Distribution System. And, and if anything requires running through a model, it would be, it would be the vital project, because it's really big, and it will have a big impact on your entire infrastructure. And I just wanted to mention that, that we need to have a model that will give us, that will be based on solid data and give us a really good understanding of the, the water distribution and delivery infrastructure, and also the performance of your system. And I'd like to note that the American Waterworks Association has put together standards for the development of hydraulic, of hydraulic modeling, and that that standard is recognized by the American, the National Standards Institute. I always call it ANSI, so I forget what ANSI stands for. And it's also recognized by the US Department, US Environmental Protection Agency. And I've got there, this is sort of just an executive summary, or actually just a table of contents that I've, that I've pulled off the web. It's standard M32, and it's called Computer Modeling of Water Distribution Systems. And I just flipped through it quickly, it's, it's almost 300 pages long, and it asks a lot of questions requiring specific hard data about two things. First of all, the delivery system, the physical characteristics and the physical condition of the water treatment facility, the pipes, the valves, the pumps, the water tanks, the hydrants, so that you get a really good understanding of the age and condition and capabilities of the physical infrastructure. And then the second thing that they really emphasize and underscore is the importance of understanding whether or not your performance is, whether or not you're delivering water to customers and to the fire department through the hydrants with sufficient, with sufficient volume and pressure and water quality for, for the consumer. So that's a big ask for a small district like Stonebridge or like North Tiverton. And so I'm going to be asking Weston and Sampson to, to, to go through those models when we get them and, and determine whether or not they're adequate to answer particularly the questions that the town of Tiverton needs answered, for, you know, not only for water delivery to new projects, but also the fire safety issues.
Thank you, Stu. So I do want to be able to move the agenda along here. So again, two separate but distinct asks of Stonebridge. So as it relates to the Weston and Sampson project, we will move forward with a formal request and work through that. But what I'm also hearing from the top of your, your update is that the VITAL project, you have what you need, the VITAL project can now work with Stonebridge to output the information that they need in order to meet the requirement of this board.
No, VITAL used to be Google.
It's, yes, that is the formal, yeah, that's one in the same here. So, because again, that is a condition of their preliminary plan application, and that is underway right now. So if we're good, do you want to talk about this, or do you want to move on?
Hydraulic model.
Yeah, go for it. Can you just, just for the record, introduce?
Robert Willett, General Manager, North Tiverton Fire District. Add on to what Stu had said, we've had a hydraulic model at North Tiverton for 20-plus years that we maintain annually. All of the information that he gave is correct, but once the model is up and running, that's done. So to say that Stonebridge or North Tiverton can't do it because they're small systems, that's completely wrong. When you do all your testing to create the hydraulic model, you do flow tests, you input the size of the mains, the lengths, where your hydrants are, your pressures. You put the flow test data into that model, and it gives you the C factor of the pipe, which is the corrosion that's inside, and all of that information. So it's already in those models. So you're not asking Weston and Sampson to put that anywhere. It's already there. And the fact that Stonebridge now has an up-to-date model, they can be run independently, they don't have to be put together. If you put in VITAL into Stonebridge's new hydraulic model, it's going to give you pressure upstream and downstream of that development. Once you have that, it'll show you what it would do to the connection that Stonebridge has with North Tiverton. You wouldn't ask Fall River for their hydraulic model to put, to find out what we're going to do to Fall River's system. They can work independently, you'll get the same information, you just have to input the right data. So that will go into our next topic, but is that clear up?
And that's, that's why I had said, you know, if you're looking at running, you know, two models to get the complete information, you could have two three, because Forever also is a major contributor to, to North Tiverton. And if you look at the two systems, you want to combine them to be one, then it would be one-third of the system. So, I mean, if you, you can't get an accurate reading if, from two systems, if, for a whole system project, if that's what you want to do out of, out of these models, because you're leaving out the factor four, which is a major player in it. So it's, I understand it, I completely understand where you're going with it. I think the methodology might be a little bit skewed.
Point taken. I, I think the challenge that, and the frustration you're hearing from this board is that this would have been great to sort of iron out 12 months, 24 months ago, whatever.
Great to like have a conversation like this with these people back then, which never happened. I mean, I get it. People went back and forth with the people that were deemed.
We're not going to, I don't want to debate that here, because that's.
Yeah, I get it.
You know, literally, so.
There's been a lot of misinformation.
And.
Hopefully, hopefully, we can clear it up.
And that's exactly why you guys are all here tonight, and if we're okay, I'd like to move to the next part of the agenda. I don't know if it's going to be more comfortable for you to grab a seat, or you want to stand?
I'm good.
All right. So again, what we're going to talk about now is opportunities for the planning board and the water districts to work better together. Again, just for the sake of, of the audience, there's now a joint monthly meeting that is represented by the two water districts, the town council, the town administration, planning board has a seat on it. And I found the first meeting that I attended the last time to be a pretty productive discussion, and we walked away with a couple of action items to get us to the point here tonight, which is, hey, let's figure out a way to work better. And so my conversations with the staff are netted full support for that. Everyone recognizes that there is a way better opportunity to work together here tonight. So we want to try to work through that. We may not get through everything, but it can be a start, and we can follow up with offline discussions accordingly, so.
I don't have enough for everybody.
No, that's fine. I have, is that your, your application?
So this is, it's not the whole application, it's just the, it's the required information to run a hydraulic model. What's that? You have some?
So maybe as, maybe as you're handing that out, let me try to.
I'll read it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to set the stage. And Mr. Willett, you can, you can, or anyone can. So one of the key things, one of the key points that we discuss that we want to work through is process, improved process. So in today's world, developers, applicants are needing to go direct to the water districts to start the process of getting information, which then ultimately comes to this board as part of the, you know, the multi-phase vetting process here. One of the major opportunities, and that the staff acknowledges, is that we can do a better job process-wise to have the applicant fulfill sort of, get the information that you guys need, and maybe mostly North Tiverton, given some of the stuff going on here, and that can all, the planning office can play sort of the hub for that, and then once we get that, the planning office can then work with you all to start the process of evaluating and vetting and all of that sort of stuff. Am I tracking that correctly so far?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Are we looking?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
I'm trying to get the application up for you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, great. So, Mr. Willett, do you want to give a sort of a, sort of an overview of the application or what have you?
So like, the, the most important stuff for the water districts to run the hydraulic model is the, the average daily usage, which is being gallons per minute, the maximum daily water usage, which would be in gallons per minute, peak demand gallons per minute as well, and then a proposed site plan that shows the service location. And then a proposed site plan that shows the service location. And most plans have it, but proposed contours and elevations so that you can know the pressure changes within the development. And then a required fire flow for what that development would be. That's pretty much for all developments. And then if you have additional information needed for industrial and commercial. So for that, you need like the patterns because commercial is not the same as residential. So you need to know when the most water is going to be used. If they're like a third shift place or first, like you just need to know when the water's going to be used. And then specific scenarios that would need to be evaluated aside from the average daily demand and the maximum in fire flows. So just if, if it's a business that, say a bottling company and they, they use like a different format, it's just different than residential.
Mm-hmm.
And I think a lot of that information that Bob's reviewing right there obviously comes from the developer because they have their idea of what they want to do, what they're going to include, what they're going to have. So part of our discussion at the last meeting we had was with the involvement in the planning board, a lot of that information can be hashed out and submitted before a developer even sits down with you. Because if there's, there's obviously a checklist and if there's a checklist with the information of either contacting this water advisory committee or contacting the individual board required for it, then that meeting can be had with the developer and all of this information can be hashed out at a time before they even get here. Which, which really alleviates a lot of the problems and a lot of the, probably a lot of the anguish for, for both the, the planning board and the developer of what are they going to need, what do they, what do they require, what are they going to give us, you know, what can they, they afford to us? Because they'll know going in if they, if, if this is an issue. Like, you know, like we had talked about the other night, nobody ever comes to us, either water board, until after the fact for the most part.
Yeah.
Or unless we make the phone call saying, we're hearing about this, what's up with you guys, you know?
Yep. And that's part of the opportunity to improve process here.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So what we have on screen is a draft application, I'll call it an application for now, that we are thinking the, thank you, that the, we anticipate that could be sort of housed, for lack of a better term, with the planning office. And as part of application checklist, we could somehow better incorporate this into the appropriate phase of the checklist and then have the applicant complete this, it comes in, and then we, meaning the planning office, deliver that to the appropriate water district and start the process that way. I'm looking at staff, just to, any feedback on all of that?
I just want to get a little bit of clarity. You made some remarks about that like that the developer can come to the water district to sort of work out those details before they've ever been to planning. And I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page with what we think the, the order of business is to do that. Because I think we had had a conversation previously that the process right now is that the developer is going directly to you guys.
I think he just misunderstood how he worded it.
Okay, maybe that's the case. Okay. If that's the case, then, then I retract the question. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page in terms of.
You weren't saying that you want them to come to the water districts first, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You were saying like you want planning to talk to us.
Well, if, if it's in, if it's in a planning checklist, then it'll happen. It's not like, you know, you come to us and then, then we'll give you our answer and then you can go to planning and see what they say. If it's in your checklist that these are the items that the developer has to accomplish before he can, he can move forward with whatever it is that, you know, your process, whatever your process may be.
Yeah.
He'll have that information ahead of time, but he'll have it because you sent them to the appropriate department to do it.
It's their own checklist.
You know, it's, it's like going on vacation. You make sure you got the money in the bank before you go on vacation typically. So, I mean, we're the same way.
I'm not following the analogy, but it's late in the day, so I'm not going to blame the other side.
Honestly, you want to go or you want me?
Go ahead.
Honestly, at the end of the day, what we're looking for is we want to run the hydraulic model one time.
Yeah.
Because it's not a cheap thing to do. And a developer, no matter how much money people think they have, they shouldn't have to run this model two and three times.
So that goes to my question that I was just going to ask, that I think you guys have valuable input on is when is, what is that point? Because a lot of what happens at, on, at this table is there's a pre-application and that's very high level conceptual. And then there's a master plan and that's really still conceptual. Not until we get into preliminary do we look, start to see like hard engineering that we're going to now prove to you that we can actually do this, this concept. And so I think sometimes when we end up with that sort of back and forth is that somebody may have gone to you at a point where they thought they should have gone and ran a model, but they did, nobody over here on this side was like, okay, you're good to go, go run that model. And so there's confusion in that. And, and I think we can eliminate a lot of that without, with the developer not being the go-between if we're just communicating directly.
And even, even a point of contact, like if a developer comes to me, who do I contact to see if I should be doing anything for him?
Right.
Because once you have the same developer doing multiple projects in the town, they feel like, oh, this is the next step. I'm going to get ahead of it because it's going to take me so long to get this going.
And I, and I do appreciate, even on the development side of it, I appreciate the fact that these guys want to have an understanding of like what they might be able to get. So they want to talk to the water district because they want to even understand if it's even feasible to tie in for something of that size or in that area or whatever the question may be. And so I think with continual conversation around this, like I think we are all looking for the same thing. We just, we have to put that mechanism in place. I mean, a couple of times you would kick their email over to me and be like, what do you want me to do with this?
Yeah.
We need a better process than that. But that's the beginning of like.
Because my, my last go-around in this was awful.
And I think that was a perfect example of what I just explained, which was like run off and do it. We, we didn't say go.
And we don't want to, we don't want to name names here.
I don't. But I think we can avoid that going forward with, with making the communication directly between the department and the town. And the developer obviously has to be part of that process, but should not be the messenger between the two.
Is this going to be part of like a preliminary plan or?
So what we used to do in the past.
That's part of the question. We may not work this out tonight.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to work it out tonight. I do think there's needs to just be a focused discussion. This is a starting point, but here's, here's what I.
How we used to do this in the past, just a little like.
Yeah, history lesson.
I'll be quick. So a developer would come to us and they would be, we would write a letter to planning and say, we have a 12-inch ducted line main installed on this street this year, like whatever year it was. And that was what we put. So planning knew it wasn't an area of town that had no water. We could do that because the developments were smaller.
Yeah.
So now just because there's a main on that road and it's newer or whatever it is, it doesn't mean that there's adequate water there for the size of some of these projects. So we kind of got away from how that worked and everything goes to the hydraulic model now. But a lot of these people don't even own the land yet, so they need to know that they can get this stuff before they purchase the land. And they don't want to go that far into the plans and put that much money if they don't know it's going to work. So it's, there's a lot of pieces to put together and they don't currently fit.
Yep. Okay. So again, I'm going to request that planning staff work with you all to figure out a meeting where we can work through the details. There are objectives on both sides. We both recognize that in order for you to do your job, we need cer, you need certain information. We don't get that level in granularity and detail of information until a certain point in our process. So basically, we got to, we got to merge these two streams together at the appropriate point so that it's a win-win-win for the applicant, the planning board, and the water districts.
Mike Bobby has said in the past, but we also want to avoid, you know, we give somebody an answer and then all of a sudden the numbers all change and we're going to run the model.
Which is, which is why it's critical to get that to happen at the appropriate point when we have the fidelity in the plant, the proper level of fidelity in the plan.
In the meantime, if somebody runs to us, we're going to say, no, we need something from.
You're going to say me.
Well, well, that's, like, if they say, oh, we need you to run the model, I'm going to say, no.
Well, I would, I would say, I would say, we have a process and that process is for you to work with the planning office as the hub.
To make sure we have the correct information.
As the hub, right? And then the planning office goes out to the appropriate spokes, whether it's water, wastewater, like all of that sort of stuff. You know what I mean? So I think that's a good fallback interim response to any developer that's coming your way simultaneously. In parallel with that, we're going to work to figure out that stuff. My last question here is admittedly, based on like most of the development we're seeing is in North Tiverton's district, but is the intent, in the spirit of build once, use often here, is the intent that we can get to a single water district application that?
That works for either?
Yeah, that works for both.
Oh, yeah, because both systems need the same information.
I mean, I imagine you need this, yes, exactly. Okay. Because what we want to avoid is like two flavors of that.
Yeah.
We can standardize for efficiency.
We can develop one, one process, one app, one application, one set of criteria that'll, that'll benefit both of us. That's, that's easy, that's easy, but this isn't as hard as it sounds.
No, this is totally a solvable problem. Okay. Any other comments, questions? No.
How should we keep this moving forward? Do I, the water districts come back in January? Do I emails exchange with Ashley and the water districts?
Yeah, I think this is going to be best served by an offline conversation where the details can be hashed out and we're not up against a clock and like you're not standing for 30 minutes.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that's going to be my request is let's take this, let's figure out an offline discussion between staff and board.
And a lot of that, like you say, the offline, just a lot of that can happen also at, at the advisory board level. Because that's a good place to have it because decisions can be made there.
Sure. Just it, by advisory board, you mean the meeting that I just went to?
Exactly, the water.
Yeah. Unfortunately, staff's not there and I'm not doing their job nine to five. So that's the.
But I can come to a meeting if needed. If that's the best for, for the conversation, then I go to a meeting.
Well, it's an additional form is what I was getting at.
And, and that, just for, that next meeting.
December 15th.
December 15th, and it's not in my calendar yet, but, okay. So Ashley, maybe we can, we can work that offline, maybe if you're available on the 15th.
Amazingly, I am.
Give us a heads up so we can just make sure we keep something on the agenda for it.
Yes. And, but if not, then we can do an offline, separate discussion there.
Works.
And let's just, let's use email after this meeting to nail down either the 15th or a separate distinct discussion.
Six to six.
Are we good?
Yeah. Six o'clock.
Six.
Six.
I don't know.
Six o'clock.
I can't get my calendar open.
Six o'clock on the 15th at North Tiverton offices.
Yes.
Okay, we'll figure that out.
Yep.
All right. Any other points you guys want to add?
Unless you got any more questions?
I'm looking. No?
Okay.
Um, did you want to say something?
I just said the same thing you said.
Rock on. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. All right, moving on. We are moving to agenda item 1B, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, introductory meeting on the concept plans for Chase Marina. Who's coming up? Evening.
Yeah. Please do.
We'll let you get connected and then we'll do some introductions.
Sounds good.
All right, Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready, I'm all set up.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Jason McNamee. I'm the Deputy Director for the Bureau of Natural Resources at Rhode Island, DEM. Thank you all very much for making a little time for us tonight to talk to you about the project at Chase Marina. So I've got a couple of other folks with me in the room here in case any questions come up. I might phone a friend. I have Dan Costa, who's the Port Manager for DEM. The Assistant Superintendent of State Peers is also here, Rob Baker. And then our Chief of our Capital Development Program, Dave DeCoste, is also back here with me as well. So I've got a brief presentation here. I'll kind of walk through and it just gets us kind of caught up to what's going on at Chase Marina. I'll keep calling it Chase Marina. I think folks are familiar with that term. So just a little bit of background here on, you know, how we came, we, DEM, came to acquire the, the property. So, and many of you know this actually much better than me, but just to kind of.
And it's helpful for our audience and anyone who's going to be watching the meeting afterward.
Great. Just wanted to acknowledge that folks have more knowledge in, in the room than I do on some of this stuff. So DOT, they had acquired the property at 169 Riverside Drive from the previous owner and they used federal highway money, some federal money to purchase that property and they used it as their main staging area for the development of the new Secana River Bridge. And so they used that as their main staging point. Once the project was over, the facility sat vacant for a while. And then there's an internal state process where when a property that is estate holding comes up, if that state agency that owns it wants to get rid of it, there's an internal process where other state agencies can look at that property and, you know, decide if they want to take it from the other agency. And so that's what happened here. They put the property out and we saw it, came and looked at it and it met a lot of the, a lot of our strategic plans. Specifically, it was an element in our strategic plan. And so, so we acquired the property in October of 2021. We got it for just over $700,000, which was the assessed market value for the, for the property. And then once we paid that money, the money went, the DOT took that money, put it back into the federal highway fund. So that was just a little bit of background. That's how DEM comes into the picture here. So now a little bit about why we might want a property like this. DEM manages and operates peers throughout Rhode Island. We manage Galilee, Pier Nine in Newport, and then there's two other small state peers that we, that we also manage. And so I'm, I assume folks are familiar, Galilee's our big commercial port and they're against it. Pier Nine in Newport is the commercial pier. Newport, smaller, but, you know, burrows a number of commercial vessels. So DEM manages at these facilities about 300 vessels between Galilee and Newport. And the reason for bringing all that up is we just want to give you some confidence that we have experience. We've been doing this for a long time. And maybe this is fairly unique in Rhode Island. In particular, Galilee, the property was condemned specifically for commercial fishing to protect that industry in the state. And so it's really kind of a interesting and unique setup down there where we own all of the land down there, all of the birthing and the buildings and things like that that you see on the property, those are actually leases. So we are the landlords basically for all of those, for all of those properties. Just a couple of key facts here about the commercial fishing industry in, in case you weren't familiar. And before I start to run off the stats here, just note, this is a little dated. This is from a report we had done a few years back. So this is like 2016, so it's almost a decade on at this point. But here are the facts at that point in time. So the employment in the commercial fishing industry, this is just the commercial fishing, so the boats and the deckhands and, and those folks is about 1,700 jobs in the state. The larger employment for the state, when you start to expand out, you look at aquaculture and you look at some of the processing facilities and the support. and you look at some of the processing facilities and the support, uh, facilities, you're now talking, uh, just over 3,000 jobs, uh, that the industry supports. And then the economic output from that is roughly, uh, 540 million in, in gross sales. And again, that's kind of the, the whole kit and caboodle there, fishing, processing, wholesale, retail, all of that stuff. And so that was just to give you, uh, a little bit of background, why we think that, well, we manage that, uh, industry in a number of ways. We think it's an important asset for the state. And the governor has actually invested a lot of money in the Port of Galilee in the past couple of years. And so he recognizes the, the asset that the commercial fishing industry is. We wanted to point out that we have existing rules and regulations for our port management. And so those are kind of our overarching. There are some specific rules about Galilee, some specific rules about Newport. We can do the same thing for Chase Marina. So we've got our, you know, overarching rules, uh, that our marinas follow and we can customize, uh, per whatever the town might want to, um, offer that's unique about, uh, you know, how Chase will operate. And so we're happy to do that and, and standing by to work collaboratively, uh, towards that goal. So just a, a few more things, um, about the ownership and the purpose. This, this will be a working waterfront and these are rare. There's actually been a number of, um, recent articles in the Providence Journal, for instance, talking about our working waterfronts and the lack of birthing in, in the state. And we are the ocean state. We have a proud tradition of working waterfronts in the state. Participation in the blue economy, which is the new term for what is a really old, um, industry. And this includes, uh, the tradition of the town of Tiverton. So we think that this project honors that, honors that tradition, um, as well. Uh, there's a significant need for birthing in the state, in particular for commercial fishing. And I've got a citation up there if you wanted to check out, um, an article that kind of talks about this. But there is a, a large company, a single company that's coming into the state, buying up a lot of the coastal, uh, marinas, a lot of the waterfront. And it's gentrification is, is what it is. And so we think it's our mission to make sure we're protecting, uh, you know, legitimate working waterfronts, making sure people can earn a living on the water like, like they always have. The, just a quick note about the picture. I thought some people might think that was cool, but that is, uh, an old Menhaden plant. I acknowledge that I think the plant was actually in Portsmouth, but it's right across the water from you and it, it was owned by the churches, which I, I read is, was a really important family in the town of Tiverton. Uh, the, the father and, and his sons, um, ran that, that property. So I thought, I thought it was a cool picture. Just a little bit about the expectation for what you'd be looking at with the project at Chase Marina. This would be, it's not a big site, right? So we're not talking about New Bedford here. We're not even talking about Point Judith. This will be, you know, small, what we call dayboats. These are boats that are, you know, 50 would be the maximum, but less than 50 feet. So these aren't big giant vessels. These aren't big offshore trawlers or anything like that. And we would have a diversity of boats. It wouldn't all be those, you know, 40-foot range boats. There'd be a mix. And that's one of the unique things about our industry here in Rhode Island is it is very diverse. We have, um, you know, small scale rod and reel guys that work from a skiff up to big offshore draggers that operate out of, uh, Point Judith. All right, a little bit about the marina development. So we, we kind of talk about this in two chunks. There's the marina and then there's the, uh, building, the facility on the site. So I'm just talking about the marina here. Uh, the timeline for that, to get that marina back up, um, and in operation again is the fall of 2026. So that's next year. Uh, the cost for that will be about two to four million dollars. We're installing new fixed and floating piers and we think we can, uh, fit about 20 vessels, uh, 20 commercial fishing vessels in there. And so that gives you an idea of the scope of, you know, what you're looking at there. Uh, we also intend to include a pump out facility at the site. Uh, that was a request we've been communicating with the town. I know not this group, but, um, other agencies within, in the town for a while now. One of them was the Harbor Commission and this was a specific ask of the Harbor Commission. And so just to give you some confidence that we are listening, we built that into our project and hope that it would be a, a nice asset for, uh, for the town. Uh, just a little bit about the aesthetics of the property, you know, right now it's just kind of sitting there vacant. We've done some work to clean up the property since we've acquired it. But, um, once we get the facility up and running, we wanna make it look nice. And so we're talking about nautical timber pile fencing with some rope, uh, in between. Give it that nice nautical look. Um, it, it could, uh, look really nice. And then the, uh, land side area, the small, uh, parking area, that's there. I'll come back to parking in, in a moment. Uh, but the land side improvements, uh, will also be undertaken at that site to, uh, improve that little parking, um, area just adjacent to the property. So, um, we're working on an MOA with the Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority for parking maintenance and enforcement at the site. So if folks are familiar with the site, you'll know that there's a little boat ramp on the, uh, just on the other side of the building. That is actually Bridge and Turnpike's boat ramp. I think it was originally DOT's and they transferred it to Bridge and Turnpike. It was built to, um, to work on the bridge. They were putting vessels and things like that in the water there. It's now a really nice recreational asset. A lot of, um, recreational boaters use it, which is really nice. But it's not our property, um, and so we need to build an agreement with Bridge and Turnpike. And what that will do is it will allow us to help, um, control that area, enforce rules in that area. Right now there's jurisdictional issues for our, um, police officers. DEM has our own, uh, little police force if, if you didn't know that. But, uh, we'll build that MOA. The other piece of it is for the parking. So we recognize parking as an issue. There's a little park and ride just up the road from the site. Uh, and that is also Bridge and Turnpike Authority, uh, property. And so we're gonna, um, work on this agreement with them, hopefully, uh, take over stewardship of that property. And that will be, um, where the bulk of the parking, uh, would be at the site. So up away from the site for the, the neighbors in that area. So we think we have a, a good solution for the, the parking, um, issue. So, uh, we are, we've been working through the permits for the property. We went to the CRMC, uh, that was one of our first steps. And we actually, um, as I mentioned, we've been communicating with the Tiverton Harbor Commission. And that's been a, a really great relationship and, uh, to the point where, uh, we got them comfortable with the project and, and they offered a letter of support for that CRMC, um, uh, process that we were going through. So we were, uh, granted our assent, uh, it was a unanimous vote. And so, uh, we are, uh, good to move forward by way of the CRMC. We're also currently working with the Army Corps of Engineers for, uh, their piece of that permitting, uh, as well. Um, just a little bit, uh, we are DEM, so we think about coastal resiliency a lot. And so we're building the site, uh, to be, to be able to withstand a 100-year storm event. Where, you know, we'll make sure all of the elevations are raised so that, um, this, uh, property is resilient to sea level rise and things like that as well. And we've been doing that down in Galilee with some of the work down there. We're raising the piers, um, so that they are resilient to climate change. So that was about the marina. This is about the lease. And so that is for the building. Uh, we started with an RFI or, uh, request for information back in 2022, just to kind of see the interest that there might be out there and the ideas that people had for a site like this. And we got 20 responses. Um, you know, they, um, all in some way, shape or form revolved around commercial fishing or aquaculture or things like that. But we got some good responses and from that RFI, we crafted, uh, more recently, an RFP. Um, that was very recent, uh, and that request for proposals went out. We followed the Rhode Island, uh, Department of Administration process for that. Um, there's a little information on this slide and I, I did send around a PDF. I think Ed, um, sent it out to the group. So if you wanted to look that up, uh, the number is on there, uh, for you. From that RFP, we received two proposals. And the one that scored the best, we scored them both. The one that scored the best was the Dune Brothers. Uh, they received the, uh, highest score. So a little bit, uh, about the status there. Um, we are slated, uh, to have that lease up and running in early 2026, uh, with the Dune Brothers. And maybe I should, uh, pause. Dune Brothers, they own a couple of restaurants, uh, in the Providence area. Things from really small, um, you know, seafood shacks up to a, a sit-down restaurant. So again, um, they're a known entity. They've been, uh, um, in business for a while and it's a really cool, um, model that they use. It's sort of a, a water to plate, um, or ocean to plate, kind of a, uh, aesthetic that they have for their restaurants. The food is, uh, wonderful. If you've never had a chance, you should check them out. Um, we, when we are doing a lease, we have to, uh, go through a couple steps with an organization called the State Properties Committee. Uh, this, it's a public body. It's administered by DOA. They review and approve all leases, license agreements, acquisitions, conveyances, anything having to do with state property. We are there all the time, uh, in front of them. And so this is another case where we brought the preliminary lease, uh, that we had drafted up, that we were going to start working with our, uh, potential tenant with, um, brought that before them. Uh, and they approved that preliminary, uh, lease. The proposed lease terms are under negotiation now. We've been meeting with, um, Dune Brothers and working on that. But one thing we wanted to clear up in case, um, folks were wondering. So we use the term seafood processing in a really broad sense, but we're not talking about a big Menhaden plant like the picture I was, um, showing you, uh, before. Um, this is strictly loading, unloading, uh, seafood products. We're not processing. They're not gonna be drawing water, uh, a bunch of water to process squid or anything, uh, like that. So this is for wholesale seafood market stuff. And what they intend to do with the front of the facility in the old kayak rental, uh, part of it is, uh, a sit-down restaurant, um, in that, uh, part of it. Um, they may sublease to an organization to deal with the, the wholesale part of the operation there. Again, that's something that we do routinely and, and have rules and restrictions in place to make sure the sublease meets all of, um, all of the requirements that we have. So once we get those negotiations done, our next step will be to bring that signed lease back to the State Properties Committee to get that final approval from them. And I'm almost done, Mr. Chair. Last...
No, I'm following along here.
Okay, good. Um, last slide here, just to sum up. So this is the most up-to-date information that we have, uh, to offer. So we've kind of caught you up to, uh, where we are in, in our various processes. Um, we think that this project will be a great addition of a working waterfront. It'll be an asset to both the town and the state. And so we're really proud to, to be working on it. Um, we want to be good partners with you. So, um, that's why, you know, we have been working with the town. I know we've not been working with you, but here we are. We wanna keep that communication going now. So please let us know how best to keep in, in communication. We're happy to come to these meetings as frequently as, uh, you'd like. Just, um, say the word and we'll be here to give you an update. And it also is important for us to know what type of information you would like, uh, to see. And so whatever, um, you wanna see, again, we wanna be good partners, good neighbors. So we're happy to, um, bring that information, uh, to you, uh, so that you can vet it. So that's it. Um, I'm happy to provide any feedback on any questions that you have tonight. I've got my, uh, friends in the back here who can help me out with, uh, technical questions and things like that. Uh, but again, thank you for your time, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. Well, thank you for your time and coming here and walking that through the, um, you know, the project sounds incredibly interesting. I think from this board's perspective, it's gonna need to be more than just communication back and forth. We're gonna need to plug into some process things as it relates to planning and all of that.
Yep.
So I'm happy to sort of give a, sort of an overview of where we think that needs to happen. And then others can sort of chime in here, right?
Perfect.
So we're tracking, um, so just a, you know, just sort of level set here. There are a number of uses that are being proposed for this location. Some are permitted within our zoning ordinance, so, but some are not, right? And so the restaurant is, right? But there are, we have outlined performance criteria for this, we call it the Waterfront Two District, right? So although the restaurant is permitted, there are performance criteria that Dune Brothers are gonna have to abide by, right? But in terms of the other two uses, um, that being fish processing or seafood processing, um, and the DEM Enforcement Office, those are currently not permitted uses, per our Waterfront Two zoning. So in order to move forward with that, um, there would need to be, have the state, RIDEM, the appropriate entity, seek zoning and planning relief from that, right? And there are processes to be had there. So that's, that's sort of like the first thing I wanna get out there. We acknowledge that from a sort of a proverbial and literal line of demarcation, CMRC, their jurisdiction sort of goes up to the high watermark and then after that, it's the town, right? And so, um, that being said, um, local zoning regulations will control whether or not, uh, an intended use on the water is actually allowed, right? So, um, so we're gonna need to work through that element as well. And so, and then finally, RIDEM's, um, you know, authority to go construct the marina is not necessarily unlimited and you gotta work with us to sort of move that forward as well. So while I certainly appreciate your work with the Harbor Commission, now that we're into this phase of this, we've really gotta start working within the process of planning to make sure we're crossing all of the Ts and dotting all of the Is and everything is going through all of our process. That's it. In summary, I'm gonna open it up to anyone. Is there any other?
Have you been to statewide planning yet?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Has DEM presented this to the statewide planning council?
Yes. Yep, yep.
When was that?
Uh, that was just recently, maybe it was either two months ago's meeting or last month.
Did the town receive notice of that?
Uh, I don't know their notice protocols. So if you get the, the state planning notices, then yes, but I'm, I'm not sure. Um, it's a separate agency from us.
No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about on legal council of the board. So that's why I'm asking these questions. And do you know what statewide planning said about the project as to whether it's compatible with the town's comprehensive plan?
Yeah, sorry. So we went to the, um, State Planning Committee with the lease is what we went with.
Okay.
Not the project overall?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think we're, I think we're confusing two entities. There's the State Properties Committee, which is one entity, and then there's the statewide planning.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the, the SBC that I mentioned. Yeah.
Got it.
Yep.
So statewide planning, have they reviewed this project for consistency with the town's?
Yep. So let me look back to Dave.
At this point, we haven't gone before that entity.
Would you, would you like to come up and join the fun with the microphone?
Sit next to me, Dave.
Hello?
And just for the record, could you introduce yourself?
Yep, absolutely. My name is Dave DeCoste. To answer your question, at this point, we have not gone before that entity, uh, with the project plans for Chase Marina.
Is there intent to do that?
At this point, um, yes, we will be, uh...
Now that you know too?
I mean, uh, that, it was news to me that we had to go before that entity for, uh, marina development.
But it's more than a marina. It's also development on the land.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, so, uh, the land component, maybe I could ask... Yeah, so, the land component, maybe I could ask and speak to that one?
Well, let me.
Don't misinterpret, don't misinterpret my questions.
Yeah, so I.
We like the project, okay?
Yeah, we just got to make sure it goes through the right process.
That's fine. I mean, we're following, I mean, we do a lot of.
Be free to come up and join us.
A lot of construction and developments. And we're following the processes that we follow for those, for those projects, so.
But what we're, what we're saying is that there's additional process when it comes.
But I mean, we, our projects are in town. So, we work in towns all the time and, yeah. So, we fully intend to follow.
Because I learned about this from Channel 10, right? More or less, right? And so, it's sort of caught some of us off guard. And while we had sort of inklings of this, I guess my unfettered concern is that this is so far along from your perspective, where like, we're going to have to pump the brakes a little bit here and make sure we can just get through our planning process to, again, just make sure, like, again, some of these uses that are intended are not currently allowed in our zoning. That's a problem. We got to fix that, right? So.
That's right. The processing, I think, maybe is not an issue anymore.
Now that you've clarified that, that we're not actually.
So, we appreciate that certainly. But as Mr. Ralke indicated, the DEM office is not a permitted use yet. I'm sure that's an easy fix for the zoning ordinance amendment. But there's, it takes time to do that and council approval to do that. There are performance standards for the restaurant and for commercial marina itself as to how you have to store things, for example. So, although you're the state, you still have to comply with these regulations.
And anything that's going to be done on the park, like, we want to be, we're interested in sort of what sort of parking, you know, enhancements need to be made in order to support the marina and/or the restaurant? Like, what is that going to mean for the development? I mean, yes, it is a waterfront district, all that stuff. We are mindful that that abuts residential districts as well. So, sir, did you have a comment or?
Just looking to assist Jason, my name is Stan Posto. I'm the port manager for the Rhode Island DEM. In regards to statewide planning, you know, in the management of the Port of Galilee, our land leases, of which there are 27 of them there, we have not necessarily gone through the statewide planning process. However, if you are recommending that we do so or are pointing out that it's a requirement, we will absolutely look into doing that. We don't have an issue with exploring that option.
It is certainly a requirement by state law. Okay, and Galilee has been around forever, right? So, I don't know if this requirement was in existence when the Galilee Port was developed, right?
So, what I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was, I just got, you.
So, I think it would be important for RDEM to engage with the planning office directly to start to bring clarity as to how best to plug in, what we need to put you through in terms of the, sorry, what you guys are going to need to go through in terms of process here.
Yeah, the, so, 100%. That's exactly why we came here. That's, you know, exactly what we want to do. And just backing up, I mean, we have been trying to communicate with, with the town, you know, all along here. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear. And I'm sorry that you had just learned about it recently when they reported on the, it was the State Properties Committee meeting is what you heard about.
Like, don't get me wrong, it's great press. It's just, it caught some of us by surprise.
Well, I guess, we had been making an effort for, you know, a year and a half with the town, working with the previous town manager, now the current town manager, who's the one who connected us with you. So, we're thankful for that.
Yeah.
But we're, we're ready to engage. Just let us know who specifically, so it sounds like you offer.
So, Ashley Sweet, our interim town planner, and Ed Rotella, who is our land use clerk.
Yep.
They're going to be your single points of contact for the planning office.
Yep, that's great.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we can expect some follow-up there. And once that, that follow-up starts, you'll naturally plug into the loop. You'll probably be back here, right?
Yep.
Yes. So, we'll take it one step at a time. Again, we're supportive of the project. We just got to make sure that we're crossing Ts and dotting Is here.
That sounds perfect. Yep, yep.
Anything else from the board or staff here? No? All right, great. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to keep moving on here. Next. It is an open public meeting. It's not a public hearing. We can entertain brief comments from the audience here. That's the rules. I'm going to, we'll play it by ear, sir, and see how much you have to say. And we'll take it one step at a time. I'm going to invite you to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and we'll take it from there.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to hang up?
I think you can hang.
My name's Charlie Smith. I live at Riverside Drive. I'm about 500 feet from the project. I've been involved in the Harbor Commission as, not on the commission, but just following them since 85. Since 1985 until the present day, there are things in this Harbor Commission that have not been addressed. Anybody that knows me knows that I'm the parking guy. Back in the day, when, when this all started with the Harbor Commission, Grinnell's, Standish, Tiverton Yacht Club, and Riverside Marine were a problem. None of them had any parking. Grinnell's now has a little bit of parking. Standish has none. The Yacht Club has none. Riverside Marine has none. Now, we have a boat ramp that has some parking. And contrary to public opinion, I'm in favor of what you're doing. The guys need places to go. The problem is, it gets out of hand. It took us three years to get the boat ramp cleaned up from trash. And on the last day, the guy took 11 bags of trash out of there. And behind one of the pilings, there was a bunch of paper. And we noted to him that, there's some paper you forgot. He said, I didn't forget it. I'm not picking it up. It's toilet paper. That took three years. It took two years to get Porta-Johns. So, that's, that's the Turnpike Authority. Everybody here, I'll say, most people know that the old railway that was there, that's the cutout you see in your picture. When Frank Chase built that marina, they told him, you can't fill that in. It's historic. Now, all of a sudden, CRM C changes their mind and says, yeah, go ahead, fill it in. Like, maybe, maybe that's the way to go. I don't know. But they, they roll over for their sister agencies. And I'm sure that's going to happen here. I'm sure that DEM is going to get a hold of the Turnpike Authority and grab the land at the top on Tucker Avenue for parking because they have no parking. When I go out in the, in the summer, I have to decide which way I'm going. Do I have to drive by the yacht club with kids in the street in a tough corner at the top of Riverside? Or do I go the other way and fight the boat trailers and all that stuff? There's a lot going on down there. You've got the, this going on. You're going to have the piers coming down, hopefully in my lifetime. And you've got another marina that wants all this electric work on the, on the riprap is done. You're going to have another marina down there. So, parking is going to be premium. It's premium for these guys. What, what you just said about the 50-foot boats, it's going to be tough. They threw all the fishermen out to build the bridge, and now they're trying to make amends. And I get it, but you can't have it both ways. I would like to see a set of plans with the area. There's going to be storage for gear. They said they're going to give you a pump-out station. Very nice gesture, but it's mandatory. Anything over four boats has to have a pump-out station. So, they're giving you something, but they got to do it anyway. State agencies tend to roll together, just like CRM C getting rid of the old railway. They cater to each other. They didn't do it for Frank Chase, but then they're doing it for these guys because they need the parking. I get it. There's also a piece of property on the south side that's in dispute.
Sir, I feel like we're veering off. I hear your concerns. There's a longstanding, I think we have matters of jurisdiction at play here. What I can assure you, though, is that matters of parking will be vetted by this board because that's the benefit.
They're already listed.
I'm sorry.
You guys will open up the Harbor Plan between 11 and 15, Chapter 11 and 15. It's all laid out for you. Waterfront access, what the town wants to do. The town wants the tax money, I get that. But it's just, it, it just seems like it's falling on deaf ears. You talk to these people, oh, yeah, go ahead, do it. That's, that's why we're in the state we're in. Because there was no parking for Standish. There's no parking for the Yacht Club. Both of those guys are up and running. There is some parking.
So, just, just to be clear, sir, I hear your concerns. They are absolutely valid concerns. I'm not invalidating that.
Okay.
That goes beyond the scope of this particular project and the scope of what is within the purview of the planning board. I'm not going to say that there's maybe not an opportunity for better collaboration between different boards and commissions and the towns to make sure that matters that sort of overlap are better investigated, looked at, managed, all of that sort of stuff. But I'm just, we have a very long agenda here, and we're trying to get through.
Parking has been a 40-year problem, and that's how much got done. Nothing.
And, and I'm going to tell you right now.
Now, if you can, if you can put it in and hold these guys to the letter, that would help. The problem is, if, if you don't do it, we're going to live into something else.
I, I can't do anything about, this board cannot do anything about a 40-year parking issue. But I can assure you, sir, that by having this project go through our process, we will be able to weigh in and help direct and manage that which is within the purview of this particular project.
Right. Well, there was a time when the Harbor Commission asked that the land under the old bridge become town property.
I can't do anything about that now.
Now, it, now it belongs to somebody else. So, that's, that's what I'm talking. We're talking about four agencies, DOT, Turnpike Authority, CRM C, who sometimes know Tiverton exists, and, and DEM. And they're going to do anything they want together.
So, we're going to, I, I understand that. I appreciate the sentiment. We will work through that. I can assure you.
Sentiment's not going to keep boat trailers and people out of the road.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other brief public comment here? All right. Thank you. We're good. We're going, we're going to move on to Mr. Nimrofsky and the Tiverton Wastewater Annual Report update. Thank you.
Good evening, planning board. Thank you very much for having me. Since you're only on item one of your agenda, I will keep it brief. I have brought several copies of my annual report with me, like, four. So, if any person in the audience would like to grab one, feel free to. The, I hope the planning board all has copies available. And if I may, just a shameless plug. We are holding a volunteer event here at the library on December 15th at 6:00 PM, right here in this room. So, if you are a volunteer or if you want to volunteer, please show up.
So, can I just ask that, we're trying to, if we want to take discussion out into the hall, please, so that we can keep moving this one through? Thank you.
They're interrupting my shameless plug.
And I think, Mr. Nimrofsky, we, we have a situation where I don't think the presentation was, was the presentation sent out?
No.
No?
Okay.
Okay. Do we have that and we can pull it up super quick?
It's on our website if you can find that.
Keep going. We'll work in the background on pulling it up.
I, I want to keep this brief. So, come to our volunteer event, December 15th. It conflicts with the North Tiverton meeting. So, unfortunately, I didn't know about that before we planned this. But if you are a volunteer, if you want to volunteer, if you need volunteers, come here. We're organizing it. It's a good opportunity for all these boards to come together and meet each other and work together. So, shameless plug. In our annual report, basically, we are required.
Just before, just for the record, introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm Mark Nimrofsky. I am the executive director of the Tiverton Wastewater District. So, I am here tonight to present our annual report. We are required by our enabling legislation to report on our operations once yearly at the end of the fiscal year on July 1st. So, this is our report. It ends on June 30th of this past year. So, we're a little bit out of date. We've done some additional work since then. But again, this is just a good overview of, of what we're up to, what our plans are. There's a, there's a presentation of our budget. That, that is, again, that's public information available. And those are all of our pump stations that are, that pump the waste through our system. Again, there's a, there's a brief self-indulgent note from me at the beginning, followed by our budget. And so, I've been the executive director of Tiverton Wastewater District for two years. The start of my tenure was really focused on our policies and procedures and making sure that our policies are reflecting our operations. So, if we tell a developer, for example, that you have to follow certain steps, that our policies are written so that they can just read those steps and we can be transparent and consistent in our policies. Recently, we just got a new superintendent. His name is Chris Neerpass. He was an employee of Somerset Wastewater for many years. And he's really helped us develop a, our operations and maintenance plan. So, our focus in this most recent year has been taking care of a lot of the deferred maintenance. The operations, our pumping stations have, have needed some maintenance on our generators and pumps over the years. So, again, a lot of our focus in the last year has been taking care of that. There's a, there's a brief missive on our Board of Directors. We are looking for board members. That's why we're hosting our volunteer event. So, please, if you're interested in volunteering on the Tiverton Wastewater Board of Directors, you can attend our event or you can, you can contact us directly. And basically, that's it. There's, you know, again, it would have been great if everybody had, had a chance to read this out of time. Our most important projects currently, we're working on our facilities plan update. If you think of, the, the best corollary for this would be like the Town Comprehensive Plan. So, it's the Tiverton Wastewater District Comprehensive Plan where we look at our current infrastructure. We look at where the expansion areas should be. And, and the whole system as a whole, you know, it, it has wetlands areas, soils, you know, land use, population, all of the things that you need to create a good plan. And that should be done early next year. That's being done by Weston and Sampson. So, that, that's a big project that we're really excited because that will give us our plan for moving forward. And we're actually currently working on connecting some butters on Bay Street. We got a grant from DEM, and there were some households that were in the Phase One Expansion Project originally that were left out, and we wanted to make that right. So, we got this grant money and we were able to, we're, we're currently working on connecting a bunch of homeowners to the existing main. So, those are our current major projects. And again, I want to throw this out for any questions that the, that the planning board has. You know, I, I know Bill well. I've, I've had many conversations with Ashley over the last couple of years. Stu and Bill came to one of our board meetings. You know, I'm, I'm open to, you know, dialogue, any recommendations, any concerns that the planning board has. Certainly, they can bring them to me directly. But I think the, the best use of this time would be to, to open this up to questions for, for the planning board.
Yep. I, I do have, I do have one. And just for full disclosure, I used to sit on the board of the Tiverton Wastewater District back in the day. Mr. Nimrofsky, in the spirit of sort of what the, sort of the conversation that we were having with the water districts, is there anything in your opinion that from a sort of working relationship perspective, process perspective, that we can improve between the Tiverton Wastewater District and the planning office?
I think it's been working pretty well. You know, I, again, as you know, I reached out to the planning board early on. It was important for me to understand where developments were in the process as they were, you know. were in the process as they were, you know, at the time when I first started, I had no idea even how many developments there were, where they were, what their requirements were going to be, so again, through some conversations that I had with the planning board and, and being diligent about following your meetings, you know, I was able to sort of figure out, you know, where these developments are and, and where they stand. So, again, again, I, I think we have good communication, I think, you know, more formal route would be great if we, it might save everybody a lot of time if we had an update meeting like, like you're suggesting with the, with the water districts, I think that would be great to include us. And again, you had talked about doing, you know, like a, a monthly update of, of major players and, and what developments are coming through the pipeline, I think that would be really helpful. But again, you know, I think as it is, it, it takes work. You know, if you want to know what's going on, you have to pay attention, you have to show up at the meetings and, and, you know, I, I think we've, we've all worked together and, but it, it takes time, so I think that's, that's the lesson that I've learned anyway.
And we're going to be talking about that monthly summary, summary report later in the agenda, and we're going to be publishing that on a monthly basis to the key partners and the public there moving forward. So, I'm going to open it up to the board or staff for any questions for, from Mr. Nimrofsky, and we will make sure that the report gets sent around, my apologies.
Yeah, looks.
Yep.
Yeah, project reports, it's just draft stats right now, that's why it's not been distributed.
Yep.
But, Mr. Nimrofsky, is there an application that we can have applicants fill out for the wastewater district, similar to what we're going to do with the water districts?
We have a connection application, but that's sort of way beyond, you know, that, that's farther along in the process than, than we've been talking about. What has happened in the past is a developer will come to us and say, can you provide us with a sewer availability letter? And, and I think the, the planning board has called it a will serve letter, and I'm, I'm a little reluctant to, to let it be referred to a will serve letter because the implication is that we will in fact serve, right? So, again, it's, it's a conditional approval, it lets them know that there's a sewer main in the street in the vicinity of their project, and again, unlike the water departments where capacity is, is a real concern in certain parts of the system, we do have those concerns, but we address those during the engineering review of the development. So, we're, we're taking the assumption that we can take the waste, but the developer is going to have to figure out how to get it into our stream, so if they can connect it directly at the street, fine, if we determine that they can't, then they have to come up with a solution of where they can connect, where it will meet the requirements of our system. So, again, that's, that's more of an engineering review and that's going to be further along in the process than, than a, a planning board application would be, so, and again, if somebody comes to me with a, with a request for a sewer availability letter, I just give Ashley a call or send an email and, and just let them know so that, again, we don't want this, we talked about it early on, we didn't want developers coming to us and then they're waving a letter that they said, you know, no, sewer said it's okay, right before you guys have a chance to understand what's going on. So, again, I think transparency and, and just keeping each other in the loop as to what's going on is the, is the best solution to that issue, so.
Perfect, great. Any other comments or questions? No?
Thank you, Mr. Nimrofsky. Thank you very much, I'll let you know when our facilities plan done and, you know, I'll have a little bit more meat on the bones as far as planning area and that sort of thing, so that might be the thing to happen in spring.
And maybe that'll be another good.
Yeah, sounds great, thank you.
Update, thank you, sir. All right, while we're in transition, I know currently, agenda item number two is our review of amendments to be adopted tied to our articles of appendix A zoning ordinance, for a number of reasons, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this agenda item to our next meeting, largely because there's a large amount of information that came out to the board, we need a little bit more time to go through that, to have a productive discussion, and we have a lot on the agenda that we still need to get to.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a second from Rosemary, all those in, well, any discussion, now that we have a second?
This is a public hearing, so the public hearing is open, there's now a motion to continue the public hearing to the January 6th meeting.
Yes.
2026, right?
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Rosemary made the second, we're now discussion?
Discussion, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, with that, we are going to move to agenda item number three, BCP Properties LLC, major land development preliminary plan review, comprehensive permit application, otherwise known as VITAL, this is a continuation from what we started in our, what are we at now? November meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, John Mancini on behalf of the applicant and property owner with respect to the petition before you, which is a comprehensive permit, it is for property located on Souza Road identified as Assessor's plat 301 lot 220 and also plat 110 lot 102. We've been no strangers to this board, as you know, we've been here several times, we've gone through the master plan process, and we're now engaged in our preliminary plan process. We have provided the board with a significant amount of information and have decided that the best way to handle the process is to essentially break it up into different components so that the board has an opportunity to digest that information and we can present it in a structured manner without, you know, usurping all of your time and all of your energy. So, the last time we were here, you, we presented to you our site plan and our project engineer, Molly Tyris from DePreet Engineering, and a couple of things that we took away from that meeting, which we're working on, and we're going to prepare some additional information based upon the, the questions and the comments of the board, one of which was the issue concerning sidewalks, and so we are working on a sidewalk plan. One of the conditions of master plan was the integration of a sidewalk system, and so we're working on that and pretty confident that we'll have that submitted through DePreet to the town at our next meeting. The other issue which arose at the, at the last meeting was also the question of school age children as well as determination of location for busing. And one of the reports that I've submitted prior to tonight's meeting was a fiscal impact study, and specifically, a population and school age children projections, project revenue and expense projection report prepared by Joseph Lombardo, JDL Enterprises. Mr. Lombardo is going to be available at our, at the next hearing to discuss that report. I wanted to ensure that the board has that report, received it, has an opportunity to digest it and go through it. I know we had some discussions with regards to that at the last meeting, wanted to confirm the numbers with you, we'll be able to further discuss that with Mr. Lombardo at the next report. As I indicated at the last hearing, we did anticipate that the change in school age children would be significant from the master plan because of the unit compound or units that have changed, essentially the three-bedroom units have, have lessened, the studios have increased, and as a result of that, it, it's, it's, it's had an impact on, on the children population. And also, we discussed the location of school busing, and one of the comments from the board was for us to go back to the school department, to speak with the superintendent, to get input from the school superintendent, possibly either by way of correspondence or even appearing before the board, we're in the process of doing that, we've actually submitted our plan to the superintendent, DePreet Engineering has spoken to the superintendent, and we're going to get their suggestions, recommendations for you at the, at the January meeting. I'm hopeful to have that well, well in advance so that we don't give you that information with a, a short runway for you to review. And then finally, you know, we are also part, as you heard at the onset of your meeting, we've been working with North Tiverton Water and Stonebridge Water, our engineer is also par engineering, they are finalizing the hydraulic model, you, you've heard a lot of that this evening, you'll hear more about that as we go through the process. We anticipate seeing the conclusion of that model this month, can present that to you in early January and then have a meeting on, on that issue. And my goal at the neck, so my goal is to give you that, have, have a meeting with that, it's probably dependent on your schedule and I'll, I'll work with the solicitor and your planning staff to maybe either do a special meeting, however the board wants to, wants to accommodate that, because I think there'll be some discussion on that, although we're fair, we're very confident, and, and we, we were fairly confident, but I think we've elevated that fairly confident to very confident that we have a pathway to water that is sufficient and adequate to address the concerns that we have as a developer to ensure viability for VITAL, if you will, and also to ensure that it's consistent and contiguous with what your needs are as a community, both in comporting with Stonebridge and North Tiverton, and we're working with both North Tiverton and Stonebridge, and we've also turned, we've also have thrown into the mix the city of, once, a city of Fall River, they apparently have a lot of water, and so we've, we're, we're talking to them as well. So, we, we've, we're doing our homework as we progress through this process, as we hear the comments of the board and we're, we're being thorough. This evening, I'm, I'm going to move it along quickly, as I know you have a short agenda, I have essentially two topics to address tonight, one is going to be the comprehensive, the comprehensive permit process by state statute and its compliance with your comprehensive plan or consistency with the comprehensive plan, and I, I brought someone who I'm, I'm sure is a stranger to you to testify with respect to that, he testified at the master plan and is here to testify again, based upon his report, to satisfy the conditions of the preliminary plan checklist and our requirements both under your ordinance and state statute. And then secondly, you know, is to go through the design of the building, so I have, I have INS Group, they're going to describe the architectural design of this, the elevations, the, the materials to be used by the developer, taking into account the discussion we had at master plan about the, about ensuring that this building maintains that New England character and is consistent with your surrounding area, so, and also landscape design. So, with that, unless the chairman has any questions, and me, I'd just like to present Mr. Pimentel and have him proceed.
Yep, no, I appreciate the update and the due diligence by the applicant here, do you want to swear in?
Mr. Pimentel, do you swear a firm testimony shall give to this board and the matter shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
So, first of all, for the record, Edward Pimentel, that's P as in Paul, I.M.E.N.T.E.L. Mr. Chairman, I know you have several subdivisions and developments subsequent to ours, I testified at the latter part of the master plan hearing, so my report actually does reflect the proposal as it was redesigned, in which we increased the number of studio, studios and one bedrooms and some twos, and actually decreased considerably the three bedrooms to address concerns of this board and the community regarding the impact from a fiscal perspective, primarily school age children, which Mr. Lombardo will speak more soon to at the next hearing, but in other ways too, vehicular traffic and so forth. So, I addressed the, the two standards that typically fall under my field of expertise, number one, which was the consistency with the comprehensive plan as it now flows from your affordable housing plan, which was initially approved in 2000, before 2005, through the iterations of your comprehensive plan via the housing element. So, that was testified to at length at the, as I said, at the latter part before we received master plan approval. And then secondly, was the appropriateness of the adjustments we pursued in light of how much housing, the appropriateness of the location, it was kind of apropos that we had all these prior discussions today because my role comes at the vesting stage, then obviously you need to design it and prove that you can engineer, and there's been a lot of conversation tonight on water and sewer, et cetera, which comes out through the prelim stage. So, that's why I'm vital at the earlier stage and not so much at the prelim stage. But having said that, was the appropriateness of the adjustments in light of how much affordable housing that the community requires to both meet their statutory requirements and equally important to address needs. That's all laid out in my report. And then finally, based on the new amended affordable housing statute at the state, the state kind of established now the base threshold of which a developer is entitled to pursue, and then anything beyond that has to be argument as to why you should ask for an increase beyond the threshold. And my report addresses how we kept that limit to even slightly below the threshold, we didn't want to make an argument about how to stress the infrastructure or stressing anything else in regards to what the community's concerns were. That's all laid in my report, I mean, I could go through it again, but given the time and the, I know you have a lot of developments, I don't, maybe better to open up to questions?
Mr. Mancini, would you entertain questions here on this topic, or you want to?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay. So, just for the record, your report that came across in the master plan has or has not been updated to reflect the, the evolved?
My report that I testified to then was already the amended development as you approved that at the master plan stage. So, I was here at much earlier iteration of the development when the density was greater in both units and bedroom count. During that process, we took in the testimony, the concerns and comments of both public and the board, and through that process, I amended my report before I even testified to it. So, the report that was approved and adopted then reflects the current proposal.
Okay, great. And for the record, just for everyone participating here and at home, very quickly, the, the, just to remind everyone here that because this is a comp permit application, the target is 25%?
Sure. So, the minimum requirement that must be pursued under a comp permit is 25% affordability, but with that comes different thresholds, and those thresholds are based on, first of all, the presence of infrastructure. In this case, obviously, we need to prove that through the design, but in the, but as we speak to this project, we do have the ability to access both public water and public sewage. So, those are the two key components from an infrastructure perspective. From a design perspective, also the roadway infrastructure and the location of the development, which was testified at length through the master plan. Then, it's also based on the percentage of the degree of affordability being provided. So, if the board, I mean, you don't have to, I'll just say, but on page 18 of 21, I did that analysis under the amended base densities that the state has now put forth that's imposed upon all 39 cities and towns. And when I say all 39 cities and towns, it literally is all 39 cities and towns now, because as of January 1st, even the communities who had exemptions under the rental exemption no longer, everybody has to meet the 10% requirement and everybody has to have an inclusionary ordinance. So, they were all on the same playing field. So, what I did here was I did the analysis based on what the property could yield conventionally, and then what the base density would have been based on the presence of both public sewer and water and that we're, we're providing 25% affordability. So, the base threshold permissible unit count would have been 268 units, we obviously have lowered our numbers down to 256 below that threshold. In, in addition to that, and I've always been a proponent that I think unit density is actually a misnomer anyway, because I would argue that a seven-bedroom home would have a lot more impact, impact than four one-bedroom studio apartments, that's the reality, because it's bedroom count that really drives the, the impacts on a community, fiscally, vehicular, sewage, water and so forth. So, we took that into consideration, like I said, listened to the concerns, we lowered our bedroom count too. So, our unit count came down, our bedroom density unit came down, we're below that threshold, and what, because of that is why I testified to that, at that time, why I felt we were inconsistent, we were consistent with your comprehensive plan and particularly your affordable housing plan as once again, it was updated through the iterations of your housing.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions for, and before you answer, sir, can I just ask you to swivel the microphone more towards you?
I'm sorry.
I'm getting some.
My, my apologies.
There we go, I can even tell that's better, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question, but it's for the attorney, is that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, on the school report, when you come back with the additional information, I was wondering, or I was hoping that you could provide more local information, the tri-state information is, is nice to have, but I'd also be interested in the developments maybe that have happened in the past five, 10, 15 years within Tiverton, to know what did Born Mill estimate for students and what did we actually have, year one, year two, year five, the same thing with Sandy Woods, are any of the larger developments locally, you know, what their estimate was and what we actually receive for students in addition to the tri-state area?
Okay.
So, I know we have that, I just, it would be nice to have that available at the same time we're looking at this. It seems like the numbers are just pretty low, and we just want to understand that.
Sure, I, I'm not certain I can get the estimates, because I'm not sure that that
I'm not certain I can get the estimates, because I'm not sure that that information's either maintained by the board or maintained by the school department. But what I could, what I'm, I can ask the, certainly I'll ask the expert to do that, but I'm just not sure if he's capable of doing that. What I am certain that he probably most likely can obtain is information relative to, as you said, some of the larger developments that are established, and determine or find out how many school-aged children are derived from those. So, at least we can have that as a benchmark, and you can understand. But I'm not sure we could compare that to what was anticipated. I'm not sure, I don't know if that information is kept, but we'll find out.
I think it would just depend on what the application was. If it was a fairly recent application, then it should be in the planning office. If it was an older application, it might be something that, like, has, we have to dig through a box for. But I'm certain that at least for some of them, we could find in the file that was originally submitted, whatever the estimate was that they provided.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It's probably going to be a determination as to how old that development is, but for the, for the more, more recent, I think that's probably doable. Yeah, we can do that.
Great.
Yeah, just one final point, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Affordable housing is probably a good, literally 75% of my consulting work now, just because of the great need and the dire need across the state. The problem is, is that, especially in the rural communities, people are concerned about density and the impacts, and I understand that. And it's been great to work with the board, because I have not experienced actually that concern to the degree that I've experienced in other communities. But what I would say is, the problem is every time we squeeze down density, or we try to minimize projects, we end up with a more volume of projects, and we end up impacting a rural community a lot more. Where you have the infrastructures, where you need to densify, because the quantity of affordable housing that will be produced by this project, and just housing in general, will have a profound impact, profound impact, both from a regulatory perspective, which is important, but just in addressing need of this community. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yep, Alan and then Dick.
Last meeting that we discussed this, the, we were at 114 two-bedroom units and 16 three-bedroom units. You saying you reduced that more, or is that still the number?
Still the number.
And with the national standard of a half a person per unit, you said 65 children. I don't know where 18 comes from. I think that's what, I think that was 18 children?
Yeah, so if you look at, and I know we're jumping into Joe Lombardo's report, but Joe Lombardo's report on page three breaks down the unit count. And he also breaks down the, what he anticipates to be the, the per capita population of estimates for studios and one bedrooms. And he can go into that info a little bit more.
But I think the, the number themselves, the 130 units are for units that have more than one bedroom. So, that includes two and three bedrooms apartments. So, just still use the half per unit, that's, it's like one half a child per a three-bedroom house. That is, that's the minimum number I see is 65. When I, when I do the numbers and I run it through, you know, the national standards, I get from 65 to 135. That's the numbers that, I mean, it's just math. There's no, it's more than two bed, more than one bedroom, those are the units, multiply by bedroom, so anywhere between 65 and 130 is, is the number. It's not hard math. But I have no idea where 18 comes from.
And Mr. Mancini, your intent is to use the January meeting to go into depth on that?
Well, yeah, so my intent is to present, Joe Lombardo prepared the report, we can testify to the report. He can, yeah, in, right, the next meeting, and he'll substantiate his numbers. I mean, these are his numbers, and we can identify, we can essentially pose the question to him as to, you know, where do half childrens come from?
And it may be worth, to Mr. Meyer's point, some advance sort of heads up to Mr. Lombardi about sort of the.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, if you want to present some questions in writing to him ahead of time, that may be helpful so that he can be prepared on that.
I would, I think that's a great idea, and if the board wants to coordinate that with Ed, we can make sure that we can get those questions off.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and that will allow him an opportunity to be prepared for it, so we don't, you know, don't spin our wheels.
Sure, great.
Do not CC everyone on your emails.
Yes, direct to Ed. Dick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to say something about the, the school report first. The, it's tough to work with half a kid, seven tenths of a kid, and come out with 18 entire kids. You know, it seems like sometimes you could end up with 26 seven tenths of kids, each one that's going to get on a bus. And, you know, it just, it's, it's hard to work through what that really results in, in total population in the school. And the other, the other thing was, that I've always had a problem with, is under the comprehensive plan, you barely move the needle. In Tiverton, using the marketable homes, or the total houses we have in Tiverton, and those that have been declared affordable, it would take 3,000 units in order for us to get to 10%. We're giving, we're giving away 75% for every 25% we get. We can't move the needle that way. You know, it makes vital, you know, I originally did the figures on Vital, and you barely move the needle with that many units, and you would think you would gain more on that.
Yeah. That is why when we introduce, so if you introduce several smaller projects, it's true that the numbers are smaller, but just as to your concern, by the time you offset your own contribution, right, how many units are you actually providing towards the 10% statutory requirement?
The denominator continues to increase as we're just, at a greater rate than we're increasing the numerator, and that becomes a simple math problem.
I think that's why now, in addressing affordable housing, the state legislature understood this, as did municipalities. We're all in the same camp. I'm also an urban planner in my own community. And that's why I think to address affordable housing comes in two parts. It's now going to be the inclusionary in addition to the comprehensive permit, because the inclusionary will now mandate, mandate that every time you do small developments, you have to offset your contribution. So, the denominator now will be kept, will kept, be at a steady level, right, at a set level, so that every time a comp permit project comes in, it's going to actually apply to meeting the statutory requirements. And I hate saying that. I hate saying statutory requirements, because different communities have different needs. The 10%, right, is just a number that we had to come up with, otherwise, communities would just back off and never provide or do their fair share, as they call it. Some communities need a lot more than 10%, some don't need as much 10%, but that's just the reality. But at least the inclusionary ordinance will make sure that every community doesn't get impacted, because then it's going to be the burden on every person who puts forth the development, to at least make sure they meet their, and offset their own contribution. That's what inclusionary zoning is going to do.
You know, but even the, the school kids report several times mentions that, the fact that, hey, we're moving the percentage of affordable housing in Tiverton, you know, and aren't we wonderful? I mean, we get 600%, the developer gets 600% by the time you take what you would have been allowed plus the five, and then say, oh, yeah, but we also were giving you so much affordable.
I, I don't want to get into the performance, because, I don't want to get into the performance, because I can show you how expensive, expensive it is now to introduce an affordable unit versus market rate units. That, that isn't just me being glib on this side of the table, it isn't. It's very expensive. If a developer said, you know what, just give me a small density bonus, I'll give you all market rate, you won't even have to worry about it, they would pursue that in a heartbeat. You do need the density bonus. But I have to tell you, this development is going to move the needle by several tenths of a percent. The numbers are there, you can look at my calculations. I'm not talking about the students, that's a different analysis by a different individual.
It's a different.
But I'm telling you, the numbers on this development, the barometer will move, and it will move considerably.
And just to, just to add quickly, and basically this dovetails into the discussion we had at master plan. I mean, the project before you is not the solution to your housing crisis or your affordable housing need, and our job is not to solve that problem. And, you know, and if the, if the document's selling, like, we're doing you a favor, I mean, we don't mean to do that. What we're doing is we're, we're following the prescribed statute that allows for this process to under, to unfold. And that is the comprehensive permit process, 25%, and it allows us to develop it. It creates, it creates something that's feasible where at one point it was not feasible. And that's all we're trying to do.
Yeah, and I don't begrudge.
No, I know you don't, but I just want, no.
You know, I'd be silly not to, but.
Okay. Do we want to move to the next?
Yeah, yeah, if you have any further questions of Ed.
We may open it up to, we'll get to the public meeting part of this, and then.
Yeah, so, so we'll have, we'll have Ed stick around.
So, before you guys, well. Mr. Mancini, is there any intro before we swear in?
No, we'll go right to.
Todd, do you want to do the swearing in here?
Everyone's just talking, right? Yeah, why don't we do that one? Do you swear affirm that testimony shall give to this board and this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? That this is your solemn affirmation?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, great.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for giving us the time to present, also to Blue Dog Capital Partners for including us in this project. My name is Chad Atwater, I'm with ISG Architects. I'm a licensed professional architect, and I have two colleagues here with me, Taylor, who's also a registered architect, and Mike Rogers, who will represent our landscape architecture. So, I guess the first thing we kind of want to talk about here is just kind of give, I know some people have seen this, but just a quick summary of what we're looking at. This project's, we're really excited about it. There's, there's so much potential here, but what we're looking at is multifamily residential project. As you can see on the screen, we've got six buildings. You can see the four buildings sort of in the, in the middle there that are three stories. We have a standalone clubhouse, one story that's visible from the road, and then we have two four-story buildings on the flanks of the building, creating this courtyard. So, that's sort of just the overall scope. Every project that we work on at ISG has a story, and this one, for us, was really focused on the design based on, you know, the context. We thought that was really important here, scale and community. And I want to start, turn it over to Mike, who will kind of walk through the landscape architecture, and then we'll talk about the buildings and how that's reflected in the design. And that idea of, again, thinking of scale, context, and community, you'll kind of see those themes throughout this whole, whole process. So, Mike, if you want to walk us through the landscape and sort of approach to the site, and then I can look at the buildings.
Thanks, Chad. Hi, everyone, my name's Mike Rogers, landscape architect, ISG. And I'm going to start with the top row here, where we have a project plant list. And so, one of the things we always try to do is have native and adaptive species. In this case, we pulled plant lists from native, or native and local nurseries, and using the state native plant lists to generate this. There are some, what we would call adaptive species, which just grow really well and easily in the environments. Some of those are more gardenesque-type plants, like you would see in the Newport Gardens and something like that, just so we're kind of tying it to the, the nature of the area. We've got a little bit of a load problem there, so, sorry, you can't see the buildings for some reason on your screen, but, so, I'm going to walk you through kind of the sequence of arrival and distribution throughout the site. In the top middle there, you can see that we have a large planting boulevard with planting down the middle and on both sides. It arrives at the clubhouse in the very center of the drawing, and then there's mirrored apartment complexes with their own courtyards on both sides. This is a more detailed view of that boulevard entry sequence. There is a stone, kind of that New England country stone wall that is along the road there, along Suzo Road, and we're going to pick up on that and kind of develop it from more of the tumble-down to something a little more constructed, with signage for the entry in the very middle. From there, it's going to be the large swaths of multiple levels of plants, so everything from lawn, ground cover, small shrub, large shrub, flowering tree, kind of that midsize, and then shade tree on top of that. One thing that does is that gives you kind of the visual buffer going in. One of the comments we received early on is that this didn't want to be right up on the road, you didn't want to have, you know, see all the buildings, we wanted a generous buffer. So, in addition to, you know, the 75 feet of setback of no clear zone before we hit the parking and structures, we've planted very generously to really close that in, not just down the center, but on both sides. So, that would be the flowering trees, flowering shrubs, and the big sweeps as you enter the site. And here is a rendering of kind of how that looks. Obviously, they're not going to all flower at once, but we will do our best to provide seasonal interest. So, there's something to see all four seasons, whether it's evergreen, the red twig dogwoods, hydrangea flowers, meadow-type plantings, where, you know, it holds on to seeds and stuff for birds in the, in the off-season, and flowering trees, and shade trees give a little structure as well. You also see the concept for how that stone wall system would work, and how it kind of guides you into the site, with the signage worked into that. And at the very end there, you can see the clubhouse. So, there would be some visibility, so you have some visual accessibility to where you're headed once you get into the site. The clubhouse itself is going to be planted densely, both in the parking lot and all the way up to the building, so it's not going to be open and clear, it's going to be densely planted with all the different kind of plants you would expect and hope for. Again, a rendering of what that building would look like and kind of what that planting structure is. So, again, it would lean towards the gardenesque, just because that's the quality that we would hope people expect. You really can't see those buildings, oh, well.
I think it's a, it's a, no, no, I see it on my screen. I think it's a contrast with the projector, that's all.
I agree.
If you're close enough, you can.
Got it. So, the big white void, that's where buildings are. So, as you, as you kind of head from the clubhouses off to both wings, and this is just one side of it, but it's a mirrored image on both sides, there's pretty ample green space in between all the buildings. So, the dotted areas, those are big lawn areas, so you have the outdoor, kind of throw the football, kick the soccer ball around space available. But there's also areas worked into the path system, where we use trees, shrubs, ground covers to kind of create buffers between parking lot and the interior space. And then, within the interior space, we also have areas such as this area at the top here, where we got a buffer and trees that kind of enclose a lawn space, where we can do things like have the hammocks that are kind of stuck in the ground, set up for seasons, or in between some of the walkways, there's the movable tables and chairs and furniture, and you can do fire pits and that sort of thing as well. Here's the fire pit area, right here, for example. And then, the walkways are there to connect all the different doors, obviously, a lot of different ways in and out. So, we came up with kind of a, again, a gardenesque concept for how those walkways flow in and around the site, so you're not creating the cow paths, you know, after construction is done. Hopefully, we're, we're scratching all the edges for people to get to different places. And then, a pretty generous planting buffer around each building, so you keep people backed off, kind of the private, the more private space. And here is a basic concept of how that looks. So, if you see from the road going into the more private area, you got a buffer of trees and shrubs and ground covers before you get into the active space. It, you know, it creeps a little seclusion, a little privacy, it also helps hold people in place, so if your kids are running around, they're not necessarily running right out into traffic, you got a little stopping point there. And then, obviously, we would have planting that reaches all around all the buildings and throughout the parking lot. Yeah, I guess that is the, the gist on the landscape design. I can open up to questions, or we can go into something?
Talk about the buildings, and then we can open up.
Could I just ask a question about the landscape?
Please.
And you alluded to this, Mr. Mancini, at the top, so the, I appreciate the detail of the plan and the aesthetic and everything there, but the one thing I did note was that there was that sidewalk heading due east. So the, I appreciate the detail in the plan and the aesthetic and everything there, but the one thing I did note was that there was that sidewalk heading due east at the. I think it's, I think it was on, I noticed it on the first slide in.
Yep, it's right here.
Yep.
Right there.
Well, there's that, but at least on the plan that I see, you can't really see it here, but up there, there appeared to be a sidewalk that ran the entire length there. Is that what you're alluding to in terms of being thought through?
That's what's in, that's, I mean, that is what DePree's investigating. So we're having some issues with regards to that sidewalk all along Souza Road. And the issues we're running into is, as you know, that that roadway is a state-owned roadway. There's some area, there's limited real estate, and what we're running into, we're either running into property that is wet or property that is limited, property that is not owned by the state, property that's a wall. So there are different obstacles or hurdles, if you will, that we have to kind of surpass as we go through it. So we're trying to figure out how feasible that sidewalk is, because it needs to be uniform and it needs to lead to something and go somewhere. And so we're in the process of figuring that out. Ideally, we'd like to see it along that roadway so that we are coming out of this project, you're going somewhere, there is a sidewalk. We understand that that is the preference of the planning board. But per your condition, our job is to deliver that sidewalk. And if we can't deliver that sidewalk, we have to explain why it's feasibly not possible to do so. And that's kind of what we're laying out in the process of doing that. So that's where we're at with that.
Any other questions on the landscape plan?
Yeah, the internal sidewalk, it looks like the entry, there's no sidewalk coming in anywhere in the pictures in the drawing. So the only entrance, unless you're in a car.
No, we, so we'll confirm that, but we are looking, we are doing sidewalks internally. And so there is a, there's supposed to be a sidewalk going down towards the side, one of the sides of the boulevard. But again, I don't know if it's on this photo, it may not be on this photo, because our issue is if we can't connect that sidewalk, we don't even want, we don't want to put it there because it's false advertising. Essentially, it's a sidewalk that's going to lead you nowhere. So if you go to that main entrance again. Yeah, see, there's a side, there's, those are walls that are shown. If you look at the top, those are walls.
Yeah, those are walls, yeah, that's tied in with the existing, it's kind of a tumble down wall right now.
Yeah.
Photo, go back to the photo.
Yeah, go to the photo.
The entrance, right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the whole entrance, unless by car, or any, no pedestrian entrance, except for a separate sidewalk that you're thinking about in the back of the right side of the road?
No, so one of the things we were thinking about is, there's that, but if you go back to that front entrance wall, if you go back to the main entrance. Yeah, go to the photo, because you can see it better from the photo. So the idea would be to have a sidewalk along that shoulder where you see the grass area. And the reason why it's not there yet is because we're trying to figure out where we're going to connect it to. Right? So if you're going to have a sidewalk either on that shoulder area or to the left, it's got to connect into Souza Road and then a crosswalk going over if we're going to continue it. But we don't know where it is on Souza Road yet. And so until we figure that out, right now, it's just a grassy area.
And this ties into our previous discussion about, like, if the school department and the bus company is saying they can't pull in, there needs to be some sort of egress out to the.
Out to it. Right, and our goal is to not have the kids come out on Souza Road. We want the, and that's a discussion we're having with the school department, is to find a way to work with the school department so we can do the pickup and drop off inside internally so that they can go in. Because the ideal place would be the clubhouse. That is the, the sense of this, the essence of this, is that building is supposed to be a community building. It makes sense for them to gather there. It's designed safely so they can be done there with the internal sidewalks. The bus comes into our boulevard, picks up, and then goes back out the boulevard. And that was the idea with the boulevard to begin with. If you recall, at our master plan, we had a single two-lane roadway coming in. And the planning board felt that that was too constraining, so we've widened that extensively to allow for emergency vehicles to be able to loop in there, to allow a safer passageway for one way out, one way in. And then also, we'd like to incorporate school bus to that circulation as well.
Great.
So that's the plan, and that's basically based upon your recommendations, and that's what we're working on. So the area is there for the sidewalks, we just, again, need to know where to connect them. And we're keeping the, we're keeping the stone wall features intact as well. And as you heard, we're building that into the overall design of the landscaping in the buildings, as you'll hear from Chad.
Do we want to move to the buildings, the architecture? All right, let's do that.
Actually, Taylor, go to the, back to the images you were just on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go to the plans too, but.
Yeah, just want to point out, I mentioned earlier, scale, context, community. And one of the big design points for us when we looked at this was, all right, we've got an existing fabric that we want to adhere to. It's important to the community, the scale is nice, we don't want to disrupt that. And so how do we do that? And some of the comments that you just heard about the approach into the site are helping alleviate that. But in our mind, you know, as you pass by this, you're not really seeing large-scale buildings. You know, there's a one and a half, one-story clubhouse there that frankly, looks like a house, you know, and a pretty nice one from our standpoint. You know, something inviting to pull you in, it's not going to detract as you're going by it. So we feel like the entry is appropriate for the overall site. So there's a sort of, when I talk about scale, you know, we're on Souza Road, we're going into the site transitioning. As we go into the site, things are going to step up a little bit, there's more of a presence. And in doing that, we're creating community in all sorts of different ways, but that's sort of the path. Okay, you want to go to the, yeah, you can stop there, Taylor, yeah. Just to give you some context, the two buildings that are closest to us there are the three-story walk-up apartments. And then in the background, you can kind of see this U-shaped, four-story corridor-style building that's essentially enclosed. And, you know, what you're going to see throughout this whole thing, the context and how we came up with this design is, you know, we really looked at the existing fabric of what Tiverton has in the area, and I think it's pretty familiar. We all learn about actually the architecture in this area in schools. You know, there's a lot we could pull from. And so the idea was, okay, there's so much good, like, what do we take? You know, and how do we create something that is timeless, respects the area, the community? Things that people want to see, that want to live in, something new, but also isn't so changing and bold that just doesn't fit. And what we came up with is what you're seeing here. So big ideas that we took, you know, we love the pitched roofs. We like the shed roofs that we see around here, you know, lots of natural light in the units. We love materiality, so, you know, we mentioned the stone walls in the site earlier in and around the community. You know, there's a nice masonry component to the community. So that's certainly a really nice texture that evokes a response from people and a feeling. You'll see typical vertical and horizontal lap siding spread throughout this. You'll see some shake shingles throughout this, but really all in specific spots and done so at different levels in heights in the building to create interest. The last thing which we always try to avoid is just a monotonous rectangular building, you know, with one finish going around the whole building. That's not the point. We're trying to create a lifestyle and something that's representative of what the community is and the people that live here. And so that's sort of the overall general architecture picture that you'll see. And you want to, you can go to the next, yeah. So this is the U-shaped building I was just talking about at the ends of each. Just, I won't go into a crazy amount of detail on it, but you can kind of see the unit layouts. There's a sort of central entry that opens up into the courtyard, and then we have balconies in, you know, areas for people to sit outside and connect. You know, there are cupboard seating areas against things that we like to see and also see in and around this community. You know, great spot just to sit and watch things go by. So we've got, you know, a mix of units. These have an elevator, there's a lot of nice amenities in these buildings. As mentioned earlier, we're going to have some affordable units. Those, you know, are going to be just like the units for the market rate apartments. There's no difference there, and that's, you know, credit to Blue Dog Capital Partners. That fit and finish is nicer than what I have currently. And so it's like, it's a great thing, it looks, it's going to be great. Okay, so that's the U-shaped building, these are the four stories. And then we'll look at renderings, but you can kind of see elevations and some of those things I was talking about. So we tried to break up the buildings with scale materials. We've got some banding balconies, some, you know, black, probably black metal railings, you know, color palette. We're, you know, we're thinking something coastal palette, you know, nice historic colors, something that's, that isn't too bold or standing out, but really fits into what you would see driving around. So you can kind of see, you know, there's different levels of balconies, there's some shed roofs, different heights and windows and patterns, and it kind of creates a lot of cool interest around all these facades. So everywhere you go in the site, you're going to see something that's, you know, a little bit different, but keeps you occupied. Next slide you can go to. So just a side elevation of the U-shaped buildings, and you can keep going. These are the three-story buildings, so garden-style breezeway-type buildings, 24 units in each of these. Again, nice scale to them. If you look at them from a distance, you know, someone with a lot of money, it looks like it's one giant house. But, you know, again, it's something, a place that people can feel proud to live in, and that interests us in a big way in creating these communities. So again, you can kind of see the same sort of language. There's some masonry at the ground levels, maybe up to the second story. And then you'll see the shingles, lap siding, and that kind of palette spread out through the rest of the buildings. Clubhouse, you kind of saw coming in, we're still working on the plan and what goes in there, but there'll be a fair amount of amenities and for the, for the community or the people that live here. Again, same sort of palette, you can kind of see some of that going on at the front entry, some brackets, large windows, a lot of natural light and so forth. You can keep going, Taylor, if you want to go to the renderings. Yeah, so just quickly, a bird's eye view of the renderings in the site, you can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. The clubhouse with its amenities, as mentioned before, it's a great spot. You know, it gets cold, obviously, great spot for the kids to be picked up, it's protected if you need it. Also, cool spot to run around, you know, in a safe environment, and you're contained in this little, little space. Next slide, you can keep going. Yeah, next. Little closer view of one of the buildings, you can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at there with the railings we were talking about, the different shed roofs, the different heights, materials and color. Again, we all, we feel like it fits in really well with the surrounding context in combination with the landscape. These are the smaller three-story buildings, just to give you an idea of that. And then our courtyards, and again, that mirrors on the other side, so if you're at one end, you're going to see the same thing on the other side, but a little bit different programmed activities in the courtyard spaces. So the whole point of this, and what we like to do at ISG is to build these communities, it adds a ton of value. And people have to be excited and happy to call something home. And it's not about walking in and like, whoa, where do I live? And in these communities, we look at these things, and it's, you know, I live in that one that it's the blue color and it's got the shed roof on it or, you know, it's more about just a building. And we really value that, and that's what we tried to show here.
Great.
And that's it.
So just one other point, can you just describe how you've already, this is, this is not a original, not an original project, but something you've already worked on for Blue Dog and kind of talking a little about the project and not.
Yeah, that's important too. You know, with Blue Dog, they, this isn't a one-of, right? They do this in multiple spots. We just did one recently with them in Knoxville, in a community just outside of Knoxville that was really starting with, you know, frankly, a lot less in terms of context than you have here. And, you know, they had the Blue Ridge Mountains, which is cool, but, you know, we've got good stuff here. And so, you know, similar project down there where we're creating a lifestyle in a community that was starting from nothing, building out this master plan where we were the first residential project. And that has a big, just a really important value to Alcoa. And so, yeah, we're taking those same concepts of community, nice design that represents the context and the people of that community and building it up and seeing what it's happening to. And seeing what's happening down there with that, we see the same thing here, and it's all, it's just been so positive.
Ready for questions?
Yes.
All right, I have questions, I'll start and then we'll sort of open this up. So on the architecture plan document, page three, it was identified as a typical floor plan. I read that to be the typical floor plan for floor number one. So my first question is, is that the same layout for floors two through four?
Floor number two through floor four will look the same with the exception of that center part where you'll have a unit, a two-bedroom unit that covers over that corridor, so you won't have access to the outside. So instead of that A 1.1, that'll be a two-bedroom unit on the upper floors. And then, so everything will stack.
Okay. Question number two, in the corridor building style, that's the four-story.
Yes.
The building height there.
Yep.
I could not remember what we reviewed during master plan. Can our ladder truck, I know we don't have the fire marshal here, but can the ladder truck get to the top of that?
Yeah.
Yes, and we had that discussion when we had, I believe it was the lieutenant that was here at master plan, and he confirmed that Tiverton does have the necessary ladder to get there, yeah. So, and we've done that consistently with the fire department.
Great.
Yeah, and just to clarify on that too, that's, the building height that we have is actually below the allowable building code height too. So we, it's all based on the international building code heights too.
Yeah, the three-story was like, I don't have the notes in front of me, but like 35 feet or something like that. That four-story is like 50 feet at the peak.
Yeah, to the top of the peak, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think, I don't, I won't quote the building code, but I think it's like 65 or something that you could go to. But, and, you know, there's room for adjustment on these things, so.
What was that?
61.
Okay, all right, so we're good, okay.
Almost 61 feet.
Okay. The clubhouse.
Yes.
Have we figured out the hours of operation for that? No, okay.
No, and, you know, if you look at the clubhouse, it's essentially what we had also shown at master plan. So we haven't drilled down yet as exactly the uses or how we're going to tie that up or what the hours of operation are. But they're not going to be obtrusive, really, I mean.
Yeah, and that was going to lead to my second question, which is for the fitness center, will there be, you have to go through the front door? Will there be sort of, I didn't see a separate entrance for that, like, I don't.
It would probably be coded, and there are two entrances, there's a front and there's a side. So, and I'm not sure how they're going to access the fitness center, but that may be the only thing that could possibly have a 24-hour rotation where it'd either be a card key or a code.
Sure. And my last question is, on the garages, what's the access protocol there? Is it key, remote, like, have we figured, I'm just.
So the garages would probably also be a key card or code. And they would, they would either, they would probably be managed separately. And I mean by that, they'd be rented separately.
Sure, okay. Want to open it up for the rest of the board? And we have Sumara joining us from Weston and Sampson, who's the planner on this project. Dick?
Yeah, the entrance sign, is that just conceptual or does that represent actual figures? It doesn't look like it complies with the sign ordinance. Just build bigger pillars to suspend it between, you got those castle towers on both sides.
So the signage is actually considered the lettering. And so I think that that is, that's an accurate rendition of what we're proposing for signage.
Okay.
And we'll look at the signage requirements if we need a variance. And we'll look at the signage requirements. If we need a variance, we'll, we'll, we'll try to do it without a variance. And I, I don't recall if we looked at that or not, but.
Okay.
I'll have to see if that, actually, I'll tell you.
Other questions from the board?
I think I have most of the questions that you had, but I'm, I'm concerned about the height of the four-story building. I think for that zoning area, we typically have thirty-five feet. So I didn't have a problem with the lower ones, but going up to sixty feet, that's a huge difference, or sixty-one. I mean, that, not just for fire safety, but aesthetics. And once we start doing one or more developments like that, we're gonna be setting a precedent.
Yeah, so there was, so it, it, it does come in with N-code.
With N-code?
With sixty feet, eleven inches. The building code, so that is within, and the height of the four-story at the peak is fifty foot.
So it's not thirty-five feet for that area? Because that's what he's saying, it's not.
Midpoint of the roof.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, the, the building code actually measures to the midpoint of the highest roof. Most jurisdictions vary, but generally, they also follow that from grade. I'm not, we should confirm that here. But all of, both of which, we put the highest point as the worst case in terms of like.
I, I stand corrected. My apologies. I read sixty is fifty when I was going through it originally. So this says sixty feet, ten inch, ten and three-quarter inches.
To the highest point of the, the peak.
To the highest point of the peak.
If you ever read a roof, like, you gotta strip the old signals.
Or you'll be out of. And so, do we have confirmation that code is sixty feet, eleven inches?
Are you talking about building code or your zoning?
Because I was talking zoning.
Okay.
That's thirty-five.
Right, zoning was thirty-five feet.
The zoning ordinance's height limit is thirty-five feet.
Okay. So how did we, I'm trying to remember, like, how did we not pick up on this, like, during master?
I'm pulling up the, kind of pull up this decision. I think that they, I think this might have been one of the dimensional.
It is.
Yeah, I have to imagine it, it had to have been.
It, it is, so we, we asked for, we, it's one of the dimensional, so we asked for use variance and dimensional variance, and the height of that, to, the height of those two buildings was one of the dimensional variance that we requested. And that's why we had the dialogue with regards to whether or not emergency apparatus could get to that roof. And then one of the things that we discussed at. Yeah, it was a variance, variance. That's right. And, and then one of the, one of the other points that we made at master plan was that, remember, we're, we're providing a seventy-five-foot no-cut buffer. So we're leaving a lot of those trees intact. The goal being that you cannot see these, these buildings from Souza Road. And that's, that kind of fits in, and, and, and is consistent with the architect's vision of size, context, and community. So the, the idea is when you go through the, the main entrance, you see the low, the, the single-story clubhouse gives you a, a, a lower sense of dimension. You don't see those big, big buildings, or you don't see that one big building. The other, the other three buildings, three or four buildings, yeah, the other four buildings are, are at the thirty-five-foot level. So it's only two buildings that are at, that we're seeking the variance of the sixty feet.
Sorry, I misunderstood your.
What was your request, Mr. Mancini, to have architectural renderings of sites, sightline renderings from Main Road and Souza Road?
Yeah, and, and if you go to that, if you go to the, there it is. So you can't, those, those are existing trees. There's, there's existing trees, and then there's, based on the landscaping plan, we're also going to increase some depth and density. And so the, the, again, the goal is not to see those buildings from Souza Road.
But Todd, you're, you're looking for like, hey, do you have a perspective of, I'm standing on Souza Road, looking in, what is my view? If I'm on Main Road, looking up, what is my view? If I am on Fish Road, looking down, what is my view?
Cell towers, they do that with a balloon. Before they build it, they just put it up where it's gonna be. Did that on Stafford Road by Aruda Farm, where you were, with luck, and see what you would be able to.
Yeah. So we're just trying to get some visual sort of assurances that what we're talking about in terms of the seventy-five-foot no-cut buffer, that, that indeed does provide the adequate screening for something that is nearly sixty-one feet in height.
We, we can do that, so, so we can give you a perspective, standing on Souza Road. And then sand, standing on the, standing on Souza Road, and then you want a perspective from the boulevard as well?
Sure, yeah, I.
Yeah, fine. The main road.
Can I just offer a suggestion? I would suggest that if you want. Sorry. If you want, if you want an understanding of what you're gonna see driving by this, pick the point, because we know Souza Road kind of does this. Pick the high point on Souza Road, and get a site dip rendering from that point, and then pick the high point on Main Road as you're coming by, and pick the hot, you know, do a site rendering from that high point. You don't want a site rendering from the dips. We want to see, like, worst-case scenario, what is this gonna look like as you're driving by and you're up as high as the road will take you? And then looking into the site, what do you see? This is a suggestion. I don't want to leave it open-ended and have them go back and do one, and then have you come back and say like, that's not where we wanted to see it.
I, I agree with that. That's pretty typical. So what we'll do is we'll give you three points of view from the highest end, from the highest level on Souza Road, along, along, along our frontage, where these buildings are gonna be, essentially from high building to high building on the, on the two depths.
Okay.
The bookends, if you will.
The, the other buildings that you mentioned, they said they were all thirty-five. Your rendering says forty-seven. Says forty-seven, ten at the point of the roof. Any other buildings? Forty-seven, ten and a half.
What are those? Those are thirty-nine. Are those the three-story buildings? Is that the higher three stories?
To the midpoint of the.
Let's answer this question.
And so where's that being measured?
So let's ask, where's that being measured? It's measured from grade, finished floor, to the, the thirty-nine, two and a half is per the building code to the midpoint of the highest roof. So that's thirty-nine, two and a quarter.
And then the roof variance, thirty feet, six inches?
Yeah.
So we'll have to, so, so we have to determine where, where Tiverton measures.
Yeah.
In compliance with the zoning code. And if we're out, if we're not in the thirty-five foot, then we'll ask for variance for the difference.
We have a very specific definition of building height. Article, Article five, section one, would like.
Article five, section four, provides a very specific definition for building height.
Can we just cover off on that, make sure that we're within specs?
They will do that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. So, so in our, in our original submission, we indicated that the, that we were gonna see a height, max, minimum structural height greater than thirty-five feet, and then our, our maximum proposed building height was sixty feet, eleven, three quarter, ten and three quarters, requiring a dimensional relief of twenty-five feet, ten and three quarters. So we've identified it, so what we'll do is we'll go back to the plan, we'll measure it based upon what your zoning regulation is, and then we'll, we'll, we'll cement that delta, that difference for what we're asking for.
So just when we're talking about sightlines, the sightline from Route twenty-four, sort of driving by, can we also take a look at that?
At, at what speed?
Uh, I believe.
All right, okay. Because if you drive real fast, you're not gonna see it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments and questions?
I just want to make sure we're all clear about the sightline visualizations you are asking for. Route twenty-four? High point on Route twenty-four? Souza Road?
High point.
High point? Main Road?
Main Road. What about Fish? I mean, we might as well take all four perspectives while we're going at it.
That's up to you.
Well, I would ask for all four. I think it's important enough.
Good, Mr. Mancini?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes, it's no problem.
Okay. Anything else?
All right, we, we removed the tower. I don't know if that's, if we said that.
Oh, Rosemary has a question.
Yeah.
It won't, okay, I'm sorry. Are you gonna have full-time management there?
Yes.
Okay, they'll be on premise all the time?
There'll be a leasing officer on site.
Good.
And, and then, and there'll probably be full-time facilities, because, and I'll confirm that, because it, we've, you know, obviously, they operate another one in Tennessee, and we'll figure out what, what they got, but.
Before we just go, this is an open, public meeting, so I just, very quick scan, we are running behind, but very quick scan, does anyone have? Yep, very quick. Come on, or come up there, over here.
Meredith, three-three-three East Road. So on this one, I am like really curious if there's been any incorporation for energy efficiency, water consumption efficiency, and those types of things, because if not, it's a huge miss. Because we are really like moving into a future where these things are real, and I don't want to see plastic, flammable garbage put up in my town that is not forward-thinking. So I don't mean to be, like, you guys maybe did a great job, but it's like, it's really, I have kids, like, it's their world, and let's build good stuff. What I wanted to ask earlier, oh, about the plan, the, the gentleman who was up here, we said, oh, it's the same one, but, but our numbers are different, but, but the original study that was done was done on the new numbers. I was really kind of confused by what was going on there as far as which numbers, and, because I was at a meeting where the plan, the, like, numbers that were calculated kind of became like about eight hundred thousand dollars annually in tax revenue, making my currently affordable home possibly not affordable, and we're displacing people who are in affordable homes with that tax burden. But I just, my question is more, is that the same plan? Like, are those numbers still the same?
Okay, so there's two questions on the table. Let me try to, let's work in reverse order.
Thank you.
So, do you want?
Yeah, so with regards to the material and the ensuring that this building is gonna be environmentally compliant and, and energy efficient, if we can.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. We, we are all for energy efficiency, and what we typically see with the current energy codes is, it's, it's caught up to a lot of the current products that are out there, so a lot of those low-flow water showerheads, that kind of stuff, that's all stuff that we would recommend to, to the ownership team to, to, to include into the buildings. Typically, you'll see, you know, Energy Star refrigerators or that kind of stuff, efficient washer-dryers. Those are the kinds of things that are actually part of lead NGBS programs that all contribute to sort of energy efficiency. What we try to do is outline those lists of things that are easily achievable, and, and share those with the ownership team, in, in hopes that we can help them select that. There's a lot of no-cost things that don't really change a whole lot, you know, low VOC paints. The, this stuff is, is readily available now. You know, we're looking at, typically what we use is cementition siding and panels, so we're not talking about plastics. We're talking about things that are gonna last and, and are recyclable and reusable. And so, yeah, from that standpoint, you know, I think the ownership team does the best they can, you know, within the budget that, that we have.
On the numbers?
Yeah, so on, on the second question, so the, the only thing that has changed is Mr. Lombardo's report has been revised. It's been submitted per the request of the board, which reflects the new dynamics of the, of the unit count. The studios, the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms. And so that's what has been submitted. That report is the latest report, and that is what Mr. Lombardo will testify to at the next meeting. He'll clarify the school age children, and he'll go through his numbers and, and substantiate the same.
Great. Anything else?
Hi, Renee Jones, Highland Road. I just have questions about the tree screen, because it always looks so lush and well-developed in these renderings. But during, in the winter, when there are no leaves on those trees, it, we're gonna be seeing four-story buildings. And I also question if we're gonna have even as lush a coverage as it's portrayed there. I, I have concerns about that, because it always looks better in renderings.
Yeah, I, I did hear, maybe the gentleman who walked through the landscape architect plan could comment on that. I thought I heard some commentary about trying to adapt plantings to seasonality there. Can you comment on that, sir?
Yeah, with, with regards to the planting, obviously, you gotta kind of try to pick some sort of middle point for how we're showing the landscape, and we're not showing trees that are forty feet wide, so we're not showing like make-believe. So we're showing something kind of in the middle. That may be the five to seven-year point that we try to aim for when we, when we put that in. So there's definitely growth that's gonna happen. But what we try to do is hit it at every level, right? So you got shade trees top, ornamental trees middle, shrubs, and then down all the way. So you, we're hitting all the, all the heights. And then we've got a hundred and twenty feet, I think, or a little more, that go from road to the, the clubhouse. So you got depth, and even in the winter, yep, you're probably gonna see a little bit more, for sure. But you got some depth in the stick coverage, basically. And if we do a mix of different plant types, which is what we're trying to account for in that plant list, you'll see a mix of evergreens and deciduous things in there, so that you get a mix, and you, and you get more replication of what's there right now.
Okay, and one of the concerns that's happened at other developments is that they have plantings, and then the plantings die. And so how is that renewed, or how is guaranteed that those plantings can be renewed?
Do you guys have a maintenance requirement within your, within your code, so? Okay, I'll repeat your question.
The question there, let me just repeat the question, was sometimes plantings will die. Inadvertently, what is the plan to try and address that longer term?
Usually with a big development like this, there's like a two-year maintenance warranty that goes with it, so that will cover the largest portion of the die-off. You know, you're always gonna lose ten percent, kind of no matter what you do in the first two years. So if you got that covered in the planting warranty with the big landscapers, that, that covers most of it. And then after that, you know, it may be maintenance warranty with the town, or maintenance guarantee with the town, and that's probably something more up to your code. Does that answer that question a little bit?
Yeah, I'm just raising, I'm just.
No, absolutely valid. Okay, great. All right.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda item number four. This is, I know we got a little bit of a transition going on here, but this is agenda item number four. My ask is that if we have conversation, we take that out into the hallway so that we can keep this train moving. Please? Item number four, Alfred and Barbara Aruda, one thirty-nine Lazywood Lane, Tiverton, minor land development and subdivision preliminary plan review, and variances. This is one thirty-nine Lazywood Lane, R-120 zoning district, watershed protection overlay district. Mr. Chappelle, are you gonna intro here?
I can. How are you, everyone? Hopefully, this is shorter and easier, but I'm here with the Arudas. You may know.
Could I just ask, maybe we move the mic towards you?
You, you may know the property. It, it was R-80, it's now R-120. The property has about twenty-five acres, twenty-three, I'm sorry, and it's merely a two-lot subdivision. We measure by upland, so one has, I think, ten acres and one has eight acres, but they are well in excess of the hundred and twenty thousand. It would be a relatively simple project, but it's been brought to our attention that the Ashley and Todd certainly have some challenges on access. It's here as a unified, because there are originally some variances, and when you do a subdivision with variances under the unified. a subdivision with variances under the unified, we have to look at both. There was one variance, the first that you'll see in Ashley's report, was merely a variance for 4,000, for, to do lot coverage in excess of 4,750 square feet. I didn't file it, but I think that might not be timely. I think you should know what the buildings are that are in excess of that. But I will say this, understand that under the residential compound, instead of having to build 120,000 square foot lot, you can put a 30,000 square foot lot. And because you were taking it down to 30,000 square feet, and in the town ordinance, you had 10% lot coverage, that would have limited houses and barns, we had this in, I think, down on Buckville Blanks too, that would limit them to 3,000 square feet. So the 4,750 was actually a bonus to the landowner. It was rather than have 10% of this new, small 30,000 square foot lot, we're going to kick you up to 4,750 without requiring a variance. Unfortunately, that's also been used as a shield and not just a sword. So if the lot is in fact 10 acres, which anywhere else in town would have a 10% lot coverage and an astronomical amount of building, if you look at 4,750, that's actually kind of small for 10 acres, where 100,000 would be allowable, you're down to, you're down to the 4,750. But when Ashley did her math, and, and I appreciate that, saying that, you know, you could have 260,000 square feet or building, or whatever that is, that would get anybody concerned. There's really no plan on this second lot. By creating the lot lines, the first lot, Mr. Aruda's lot, his house, is not in violation. He is not over the 4,750 square feet, so there would be no variance required. Young Mr. Aruda, who wants to build his house there, may want a barn, and it may go over that, but we think we should come at that time and say, this was not supposed to be restriction, it's a bonus, but here's what it is, so you don't see a power plant down there or something that, you know, would be more concerning. So that variance today, I think they've agreed to say, we're not, we don't really need. What you need is that lots are supposed to have 120-foot of frontage. This piece of parcel has 400 feet of frontage or 420 feet of frontage, which would work for a conventional subdivision if Eight-Rod Way existed. But Eight-Rod Way, the road that it was designed on, does in fact not exist, and even if we put it in, there's a wetland between here and there, and you can't get there from here. So we go back to 1988. In 1988, I, I'm guessing, Rosemary, I'm not trying to date us, but I think you and I might be the only ones that were here back then. There was the Lazywood subdivision, and it was done by a guy named Ken Nash or KN Development. And if you look at the Lazywood subdivision, you can see, it was just kind of an old-fashioned subdivision we wouldn't particularly love these days. There's a thousand-foot straight road with a cul-de-sac at the end. And Mr. Nash owned all the pieces that he cut off, every couple hundred feet where he could make a lot that fit into the zoning at the time. It was the planning board at the time that we believe put in the two right-of-ways, or future streets, one going right to Pelham and one going left unnamed. Pelham has since been developed, and we have that subdivision plan with you. So at some point, the planning board took the position that by Mr. Nash laying out those rights-of-way on the subdivision recorded plan in 1988, he dedicated those to the road, and on the Pelham side, that was used as development. On this side, on the Aruda side, we're calling it Jeremy. That road has not been developed, and then it appears from, and I respect Todd and Ashley's position, I, I understand it, not always happy with it, but I understand it, and I understand the argument about it. But from my point of view, back in 1988, Mr. Nash was told by the planning board to put those stubs in, and the rationale for that was to make sure that there was available future planning done for the town. That road that goes in the direction of Mr. Aruda's property can only benefit three or four people. It can benefit Mr. Nash if he decides he still owns it, because he didn't deed it out to the town. Another little history lesson that you know, but for anybody listening. Now, there was a period of time where we just filed plats, and we did not deed all the land under the road to the town and actually deed it and dedicate it to them. During that time, we called it dedicated land to the town by the plan, and then the town would either accept it or not accept it. It's clear the town hasn't really accepted it. It's private road at best, but it is there as a plat, as a platted right-of-way or easement on that plan that was put in by the planning board. Nowadays, when you deed it, then it would be a deeded way, and we'd come in here and say, we don't really need any variance. We have a private paper street. It's 40 feet wide at Lazywood, and under the residential compound, we have a access to a 40-foot public way. We are asking for a private road to come in. We would then put in a cul-de-sac or a fire department acceptable turnaround and try to meet all of our requirements. It reads, from reading the memo, it looks like they're saying, not only has the town accept, not accepted that, but that piece of dirt that's under the right-of-way does not belong to Mr. Aruda. And they are correct. If you look at our deed, that piece of dirt under the right-of-way does not belong to us. If you do a title, it belonged to Nash, and when he deeded out all the lots next to it, he deeded that lot, I can't read, I guess it's 164 and the one on the other side, it says "to the right-of-way," so that the owners of those parcels don't own to the center of the right-of-way. It is a piece from the old days when people developed, that they put on a plat suggesting, I think, that it was going to be usable by the town and not deeded to the town, so it just exists. Now, since then, you'll find that the Arudas built their house and have used it, and those of you that have seen it, it quacks like a duck, it sounds like a duck, it doesn't look like a driveway. It's a road. These guys put in a road, and we would be happy to say that if you agreed with us, that that road or any decision would be subject to your Department of Transportation going out and certifying that it met the town specs for a private gravel road. We're very comfortable that it does. It's actually, seems to be a better road than, than most of the private roads I see, frankly. But, well, we want to, the other thing to say is that that road still belongs to Nash, because he deeded out all the pieces, but he never deeded that. If that's the case, and it doesn't belong to the town or a paper street, it's clearly adversely possessed by the Arudas. In fact, I don't think if you've driven down there, you could have a better argument for adverse possession. There's gates, there's stop signs, there's no trespass signs, there is a very strong argument. And as you know, if you do that and maintain that for 10 years, then you have a right to go to court and have that determined to be your property. I think it should be town-platted property that we can use as a private road, but if the town wants us to go get that, we can do that. One thing I've talked to Todd with, and that I'm hoping he'll talk to you about, is if you ask us to go to Superior Court to make sure that we have the right to use this road, which would be your prerequisite to giving us the right to subdivide off the road, it might be a little unfair to send us on a one-year, $10,000 journey to declare that, only to come back and have you say, I didn't like the subdivision in the first place. So what we were going to ask you to do is to look at the subdivision under all of your criteria, about the comp plan, about not needing any variances, about how it would be handled if everybody certified that road was ours and usable, and grant it subject to us giving adequate proof to this board at a later date, or administratively to Todd, that we have in fact an ownership interest that allowed subdivision. Ashley accurately quotes a portion of the subdivision ordinance that says that the easement across land of another is not supposed to be used for subdivision. At this point, it's either not land of another, it's land of the town if you agree me that it's platted, or it's land of ours in that we took it. Now, I know we've been here before, and we've tried to even stop projects by saying, before you hear anything, you really have to show me that you have adequate use. But there's usually two or three people in the room saying, you can't use that, that's mine. This is a complete theoretical discussion in a vacuum. If you look at that road, it leads to one piece of property, the Aruda property. It cannot benefit anybody on the planet other than the Aruda property, with the possibility of the two people, one being the plotted let, lot to the left of the road, and one the plotted lot to the right. We have letters from both of those owners saying that they have no objection to the subdivision, which I'll introduce, and that they have, don't believe they have any interest in the road. They've always believed it's just Shorty's. So it really is in a vacuum, whether the town can look at this and say, it's a platted road that you could use, or it's, it exists in, in a vortex with land that was never deeded out. The only two or three things I'm going to add to that, or two things I'm going to add to that, is if you go on your GIS website, you call it a private road. You don't call it a driveway. You don't call an untaxed piece of property owned by Ken Nash. Your GIS website calls it a private road. Your, the only other thing we found was that when Shorty went to, or the Arudas went to develop the property, the Newport Electric needed a permission to come across it. And according to the deed that was filed, it's a deed from the Arudas, an easement across our land, beginning at a point on Lazywood and traveling north. So there's a recorded deed from 1997 that says that it is the Aruda property. And again, if, at least on adverse possession, open, continuous, exclusive, adverse, and notorious, notor, it's an acronym that we use. Notorious means I've held myself out to the town that this is mine. I don't think there's anything more notorious than recording a deed to the utility company and the town accepting the deed, that we own the road and we're giving you, the utility company, the easement right to go across it. So it's not a difficult adverse possession case, but it might be a little burdensome. One of the rationales we heard that when the Lazywood subdivision was done, and they added both Pelham and this easement, that they didn't leave the ends open. So if you, if you look at that map right now, you see that on Pelham, there is an opening that goes from Lazywood to Pelham, and on the other side, there is a straight line, and that straight line somehow means there's a difference. Can you give us the original subdivision that we sent you today? When the Lazywood sub, so, I, I know that sometimes we actually care about straight lines and dotted lines and those things, but we may be reading more into it, because if you look at the original Lazywood subdivision, the engineer that drew it and the planning board that recorded it had straight lines on Lazywood and Brayton, had straight lines on Pelham and Lazywood, and had straight lines on this easement. So all three were done and drawn the same. Pelham, we know, has been opened up and subdivided by a prior planning board and who didn't have to prove anything. Lazywood was obviously opened up as the original subdivision, but this straight line, and I think we normally do look at that, this straight line is now being treated differently, even though the other two straight lines weren't. Did you pull that up?
So, excuse me, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair? What are we being asked to do tonight?
Well, all we're really trying to do.
My understanding of what we're trying to do tonight is to give you an understanding of how the planning board feels about the subdivision, so that you can, so that you don't go to court and then come back and find out that we don't like the subdivision.
Well, that's if you are inclined to not give us the variance to say that we have access on this road. I think I can make a compelling case that we have an accent, that we have, and I'll show it to you here, that we have access on this road. And I get, that is asking you to, I'm either trying to change her mind tonight, or asking you to go against her. And the truth is, I understand that that may not happen. We don't necessarily go against our own lawyers and, and Ashley, and I don't think you should, if we don't change their mind tonight. But if you're going to hold to that, I respectfully think that might not be accurate, and that only leaves me two possibilities. I can ask for a declaratory judgment, and I'll probably do both, right? It's a declaratory judgment in town, in the Superior Court, saying, was the planning board correct in saying, I didn't have right to use this road? Or is the argument that it was platted with Mr. Nash and put in as an easement for the sole purpose by the planning board, does that mean I could use the road? And in the alternative, if I can't use the road, have I adversely possessed it and taken it as my own, so that now I can use it? Either way, it's not adverse to the town, it's just my only solution. But because those are expensive and processes that can take a year, we did ask, and that was what I talked to Todd, about whether or not you would preliminarily, if you were inclined to otherwise grant the subdivision, because it's two lots and 20 acres, for his son, if you were going to otherwise grant it, would you say, I'll grant it conditional on either you getting a Superior Court declaratory judgment that that road, that you have a right to subdivide on that, or that you own it, so you have a right to subdivide on it?
So can we call the question on this?
Yes. Please.
There we go.
Do we, do we move into discussion still?
Yeah, we're going to move into discussion. I, I wanted to first pose the question to Ashley or Todd as to whether Mr. Chappelle's testimony here tonight has changed the opinion in any way, shape, or form that was communicated as part of the draft memo, in fact, the finding. Because once we answer that question, we can move to the right course of action here.
This site plan from 1981, it's totally new to me.
New evidence, so I've not had an opportunity to review it, consider whether this could be construed as a dedication of a road, but I also know that the town has not accepted the road.
Clearly hasn't accepted it.
So.
And, and we're not asking if, correct me if I'm, swing it one step at a time, because I'm trying to stay organized. If it is dedicated but not accepted, then we would have the right to say, we would like to subdivide off it as a private road. There would be deed restrictions and homeowners associations agreements with the two lots that are created, saying that it's a private road. Because it's not paved and we're coming into the residential compound, the 25 acres would be marked, both lots no further subdivision, and it would otherwise meet the criteria, because on a residential compound, you don't, you would have to extend the road into the property or get a variance on the, on the frontage, but you only need 40-foot of frontage on a public road, and the 40-foot of frontage on the public road would be at Lazywood. And then we'd come in with the private road with whatever the fire department requires. We drew a, a Y, which seems to be one of the new things. Those of you that have driven down there, it's designed for them to turn tractor-trailer trucks around now. I think it's one of the only roads that the fire department will actually go down and say, I've got more room than necessary.
Okay. So, this is new?
Correct.
We have not had the opportunity to dig into that? Okay?
Or to even consider whether Mr. Chappelle's argument that this is a private road for purposes of a residential compound is sufficient.
Okay. So, we can't render a decision on that?
If the applicant is inclined, I can have a decision for you on that by next month.
I, sure. I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're going after versus what the applicant is going after, so it feels like, which way are the scales tilting, right? Is, is, because I think from a subdivision perspective, I don't think there's, I mean, put all of this aside, the subdivision, there's no issue.
There's no issue.
Right. Like, this is walk in the park, right?
Agreed.
I have to admit that I struggled a bit with this because they're asking for two lots and 20 acres, and that's a reasonable request. The problem is...
And since it's a rural compound, they cannot do any further subdivision of it as well.
Correct. The struggle is that we have a legitimate and legal mechanism to allow them to do that, and I don't see, I don't see anything that I think at this point, and again, this is the first time I've seen that, that kind of changes that position. I don't think that's necessarily the end of the road. I mean, we've, you know, court has talked about a couple of different options, and again, I'm not looking to put the applicant through anything unnecessary. It's two lots on 20 acres, which is a very reasonable request. I just want to make sure that from the town's perspective, that it's done in a way that makes sense and that, you know, also that Todd is comfortable with.
Then we need to continue this matter to our January or February meeting to give Todd and Ashley an opportunity to take in this new information that was presented tonight and to decide if, in fact, the applicant needs to go to Superior Court or whether we, you know, or whether there's another solution that can avoid a court case.
And I will say ultimately, I don't have an issue with, and Todd and I talked about this, I don't have an issue with a conditional...
Approval.
Approval based on them proving one way or the other. I'm not opposed to that, but I don't know, I don't know that we can answer kind of those initial fundamental questions to even get to that point until Todd has had a chance to look at this and we can discuss it.
Here's my concern, though, Cora. Even if it's a private road, a private road is still owned by someone. So whom is this private road owned by?
So, again, I may be wrong, but I see it as three possibilities. One is it is a strip of land that is 400 by 40 that is owned by Nash because it was never deeded out from him. Mr. Nash is dead, by the way. I believe I found his wife in Bristol, but she's very old. But if that's the case, then I would either get a deed from that and then I would own it, or I would adversely possess it. But if I owned it, it would be a, you would have the legal authority to give me a subdivision because it wouldn't be an easement over adjoining land. It would be a hockey stick lot created, you know...
For the purposes of a residential compound.
For the compound, so I'd have that. If it was like the old days, we used to just put in stubs. And Rosemary, I don't know if you have any memory of this or not, but I can see this planning board, or at least going back in time, when Nash comes in and says, "I'm going to put a laser straight road 1,500 feet into my property with a cul-de-sac. That's going to be the ugliest kind of thing that you could do. You probably wouldn't allow it anymore." But the planning board's saying, "Well, some point in the 1,500 feet, you mind throwing stubs to the left and right that die ironically at the two biggest undeveloped properties there are? That is what your planning board would do? I guarantee that's what they did do." I'm trying to find minutes now that I know this is... But if you did that, right?
Hold on, Cora. I don't know if I completely agree with that. The Jeremy's Lane, as we're calling it, the private road, goes only to the Aruda's property, whereas Pelham went to multiple parcels. Or was it...
Pelham's...
It was developed.
No, after it was developed, but when that was developed, you didn't, I'll say, didn't have as much talent or purism on the ordinance, and you looked at it and said, "That's a stub we can develop off of that." Now, we're looking at it and saying, "That's a right-of-way. We can't develop off of that." But they were both created the same day, by the same document, by the same developer, and one we allowed future development on and one now we challenge. And the one we allowed future development on, we allowed real development on. We allowed it to keep going. This one is a dead-end, single road to two lots that are forever going to be locked in this too.
I mean, I just have a question. Do we know for sure that Pelham was in the same state as what we're calling Jeremy's Way? Like, do we...
Or what subsequent approvals were requested for it?
Well, I actually, we have that. We have...
So I don't want to take the board's time with this, but this is all evidence I would need.
So, yeah, so where I want to be right now is, we're not going to solve for this now. We're not going to render a decision that is conditioned because we don't have enough information. What I want to get clear on is what do you, Todd and Ashley, need in order to properly deliberate this and we continue this till January? But we want to make sure that the time between now and then is productive, so what do you need in order to do that?
It sounds like they have original site plan, information about how Pelham was developed, and everyone's looking for minutes.
We have the original Lazywood subdivision that is the first time that Pelham and this easement showed up on documents, because we can show that before that, it was just the Nash giant piece, and Lazywood didn't exist. Then we have the subsequent development, what year was that, of Lazywood, where they had, Lazywood actually, on the original plan, didn't even come all the way. They extended it, right? That's the Ross... What do they call it? The Rosal and the...
Jeffrey and Valerie Copelson.
Copelson. There's a Copelson extension, so we have that. We have the maps to show you that they were all closed lines for some reason.
Okay. So let's get all that over to me.
Because I think closed lines normally show intent, but when you close the line...
That's what the report says.
Right. But when you close the line on Brayton and Lazywood and you close the line on the other two, they no longer show intent because to close the line on Brayton and Lazywood to come in for the Lazywood subdivision makes zero sense. That's just a bad drafter.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
And we have no objection at all to the continuance, and we're just trying to figure out everything. I'm going to try to get you minutes to see, because I suspect there's minutes there that say at master that we want to see a stub.
So I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item until our January meeting?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion?
I would just mention, I would file the adverse in the meantime. Probably done before that, a one-hearing situation. Did you put down the gravel on the street? Did you put down the gravel? You maintain the road? You've got an absolute perfect case for an adverse. It should, with no butters, with a controversy.
With all due respect, I could have an argument against it, but I won't say anybody...
The drainage pipe.
So, so we have a motion...
There's a drainage pipe in the road that you approved.
We have a motion in a second to continue this until the January meeting. All those in favor? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
While I'm here, do you want to extend the, do you mind if you extend the clock? Understand everything there, Ashley? Are you okay?
Yes.
It's a month, but it's positive feedback, right?
Your kid's going to be 41, but we'll get that big...
Okay, we're going to transition to agenda item number five. My ask is that, if there's any conversation, that we take it out into the hall, please?
Yeah, I should put those in now.
We're going to move to agenda item... Can I just ask that all conversations be taken outside, please? I'm going to ask a third and final time, can we move stuff outside? We are getting late here, and we have a lot to cover still. Okay, we're going to move to agenda item number five. Awashans Realty Incorporated. This is the minor subdivision preliminary plan, comprehensive permit application continued from the September 9th, 2025. Request to extend the time clock. Location is Zero Stafford Road, in Old Stafford Road. Plat AP 213, Lot 134, R120 zoning district, partially in a watershed protection overlay district. Mr. Chappelle?
You've heard this petition. You were waiting for us to come back after the site visit and make some changes. Those weren't done in time to get this before you, before the time clock ran out. Todd and Ashley recognized that and asked me to do that. Some other reason I didn't, he didn't get an email from me. I'm sorry about that. And he put it on the agenda, so we are asking to extend the time clock. We believe we'll be here, I think, the February meeting.
So do we need to make a motion to extend the time clock?
To February 28th, please.
February 28th. Second.
We have so moved, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
February 28th, extend the time clock to 28th, end of the month. It's the end of February. Makes it clean. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number six. Blue Pine LLC. This is a concept plan for a development plan review with Unified Development Review. I'm going to let the applicant get into the details here, but this is, location is 1289 Stafford Road in Tiverton, Plat 216, Lot 108, west side of Stafford Road. Zoning is pedestrian-friendly zoning district, general commercial zoning district, and water protection overlay district. Time clock is set at 60 days, January 3rd, 2026. Thank you for your patience to get here.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Attorney Dan Argentair for the applicant, Blue Pine LLC. As you stated, the property is 1289 Stafford Road, which is currently a quasi-mixed-use property with two buildings, subway in the front and a residential building in the back. Kind of by way of backgrounds, the board understands why we're here tonight. The applicant had purchased this property from a seller who had represented that there was permitted residential units in the residential complex, we'll call it. As this board, I'm sure, knows by now, at some point, when the applicant went to obtain refinancing and was dealing with the town on it, it was discovered that five out of those six units were never permitted. So there are currently issues dealing with building code violations as well as zoning. We're here before you tonight to kind of present an application in an effort to bring this into conformance and bring those five units into conformance under the town's Article 6, Section 10, which is the performance standard requirements. Nothing would be changing within the building other than what would be required by the Building Department and Fire Code. This is merely a change, or I should say, an amendment to the use, if you will. As of right now, what we're looking at, I had submitted that we would be requesting one variance. Upon further review of the code, I believe that we would be requesting two at this point because this property is not connected to public water and sewer, which would be one of the requirements for residential uses over four, over four units. So at this point, there would be the two variances, which would be for relief from the requirement that there be commercial or retail use on the ground floor in the pedestrian district, and request for relief from the requirement that the property be connected to public water and sewer based on the fact that it's going to be over four units. I'm happy to entertain any questions about this. I have the applicant here with me tonight as well, Steve Cutt, who is the principal of Blue Pine. Correct, principal?
I'm excited.
Oh, and the president?
The mic?
Yeah.
Yes, it's Blue Pine, Melanie Santos, and Stephen Cutt.
Where do we want to begin on this one?
What is the staff recommendation?
So can we, yeah, go ahead, and then I do have a question or two here.
It's just a concept plan, so we don't have a recommendation at this point. I mean, it's a pre-existing use. They're trying to remedy, you know, a situation that they did not necessarily create here. You know, I did meet with their attorney. We talked about options. I think what they're asking for is probably the best path forward for them. You know, I think we would, we would want to make sure that we craft a decision, you know, if you're in favor, that we craft a decision that really carves this out as a unique situation because you're granting relief that you probably would not want to grant under normal circumstances. But I think that, you know, obviously, like I said, it's a pre-existing issue that they inherited and are just trying to remedy the best that they can.
Right, right. No problem with that at all.
And just to be clear, the concept plan, which is not on screen here, but maybe we can get, I think it's page four of the application cover letter PDF file. Yeah, there we go. Page four. I just want to be clear, the changes is what you have outlined in red?
That's correct, and these plans were drafted. Keep in mind that we're not necessarily changing anything about the building other than what needs to be changed for fire and building code purposes. So these plans were drafted to appease the fire marshal and his requests. I believe these ones were for fire because there was, there was ones for fire and one for building. But these were, normally, Mr. Casali, who's our co-consultant, is with us at these things, but he was unavailable tonight. But these were the plans that he presented to them.
Yeah, I mean, this seems very straightforward. I do agree, we want to be mindful about setting a precedent here, but there's probably a path forward on this. So next steps are to flesh this out and come back.
Ashley, what's the application decision?
Well, I mean, we have them on as a concept review for development plan review and unified development review because they need the relief. I mean, I don't see a reason to do it differently.
Can you do variances on development plan review?
Yeah. Yeah, you can do UDR on DPR.
Okay.
So just for everyone, the boards and the applicants benefit, can we just be clear on next steps for them?
I mean, I don't think, just going back to that, I don't recall, did we have a reason why we went with DPR over minor land development? I mean, they're essentially the same thing.
I think the DPR decision was just based on the fact that this is going to be done under the performance standards and the code, and there really isn't a set venue for it necessarily.
Does it meet the definition of minor land development? That's probably a problem.
So there is no...
They're almost identical.
So there is no change in use?
Right.
I mean, it could be viewed as somewhat of a change in use, but it's more of an intensification of use.
The way that we've been using development plan review is we've been using a change of use for like the administrative DPR, and then we've been using the formal DPR for anything greater than the change of use. But the formal DPR is almost identical in process to minor land development. I don't recall if we had a particular reason we went with the DPR.
Is there a concern that you have about going, if the formal DPR is nearly...
From a process standpoint, it's almost the same as minor.
So which one do we want to go down?
I honestly don't know that it matters unless Todd comes up with something in the definition for the two, but they're almost the same.
Yes, minor development includes multifamily residential development of up to nine units, so you could do it.
I don't think it, honestly, I don't think it matters.
We're just going to call it...
Unless you have a preference on your end.
We don't necessarily have a preference, whatever this board recommends.
Development plan review is change in use of the property, adaptive reuse, adaptive reuse, development in designated urban or growth center, institutional development, and development in historic district.
Which they took out.
So Todd, your recommendation is minor land development?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go with minor, then.
We can do minor.
Okay, great. So we're clear on next steps?
We're all, we're all fine with that.
It would just be minor with, under UDR.
UDR.
Yep. Okay, all right. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Appreciate it, members of the board.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all.
Have a good one. Okay, moving on, we're gonna move to normal planning board, or pick back up with planning board items. Item number 7D, Abigail Estates. This is a discussion and possible vote on an enforcement action to include notice of violation to compel completion of the work to energize the streetlights and/or calling the performance surety bond to compel the bonding company to engage a third party to energize the streetlights or reimburse the town for its expense in engaging a third party to do so. Attorney Akers, thank you for your patience. Turn it over to you.
All right, good evening. Good to see you guys again.
All right.
We've had many, many nights here regarding this, so fortunately, or unfortunately, I thought we were, we're good, and this issue came up with the energizing of the streetlights. So it was kind of, surprised me when I got an email before Thanksgiving saying, hey, there's a, there's a problem here, and, and part of it is Attorney Romano and I have been playing literal telephone for the past month or so, trying to figure out what town's engineers are saying, him relaying it to me, me relaying it back to my client's electrician, trying to figure out the issue, and we kinda were hitting a proverbial wall this last couple weeks, which, which led to tonight. My understanding, at least the information that, that Attorney Romano provided, was that there was some sort of inspection this past Friday, Black Friday, and that now there's a better idea of what exists and what the issue is. It's hard to resolve an issue if you don't understand what the issue is. So on my client's end, the electrician's end, was that there's something that Rhode Island Energy isn't figuring out, and it's, and we didn't understand what it was, but to cut to the quick, the light posts are up, the wiring is there from the bulb to the base of the poles, okay? Now, this is the information that's provided to me, and this is what I understand it being, if it is so, we know what the solution should be. There's conduit running from the light posts themselves to the handholds, ultimately to the transformer, okay? Wires need to be run, basically, from pole to pole to pole, the six of them, and then up and into the transformer, of which then, from what I understand from the town, is then Rhode Island Energy would connect it to the transformer, and the neighborhood would have lights, and correct me if I'm wrong there. So that's, that's my understanding.
I am not an electrical engineer.
Neither am I.
We'll play one, but, okay.
But it makes sense.
Yes.
And if, if that's the case, then that's what needs to be done. We spoke with our client today, who is receptive, and currently, we are working on engaging, and my authorization right now is working on engaging an electrician to go out there and basically run the wires through the poles. So that's what I'm working on at this moment.
Okay.
And to get that done as soon as possible.
So I think it begs the question about our ability to get this over the finish line, and I know I've probably uttered that phrase numerous times as we've gone through this, but like, there's no patience left, and I know, Mr. Akers, you're between a rock and a hard place here, but you need to let your client know that there's no patience left here. And, so, I mean, I don't know, what's the board's feeling on this? Certainly welcome, like, do we actually move to?
I think I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you had a conversation with the administrator outside?
Yes.
And what was that conversation?
Pretty much exactly what I told you guys.
Okay.
And what did he tell you was going out? Or he's ready to do it?
Get it done, or?
Get the electrician, right?
Yep, get an electrician. And so that's what I'm working on right now.
So my suggestion to the board is that you give me, I guess, authority to call the bonds in 10 days if the lights are not energized.
Yep.
And give me discretion as to whether the bond should be called based on what Attorney Akers reports. If you tell the electrician it's going out here on the 11th day, for example.
Yep.
Do you really wanna call a bond?
No, no. But this is like such a short leash on this, you know what I mean? Those folks that live at Abigail Estates still have no lights, like, I mean, this is ridiculous at this point. So, I mean, I'm happy to.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to give the planning board solicitor the authority to, to call the bond when he sees fit to do so.
So I would say, just to augment that, we give that a 10-day window, like, let's put a defined timeframe on that.
Can we do business days, please?
Coming in.
Can we do 10 business days? Can we clarify that?
Yeah, 10 business days is fine. Because we understand there needs to be some coordination with the power company here. So.
Do we have a second?
Do we, we have a motion, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Yeah, I saw Cheryl's hand first. So we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Todd, are you good?
I am good.
Mr. Akers, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, planning, planning board item 7E, recommendation to town council on renewal of license for Hometown Country View LLC doing business as Country View Estates, 213 Hurst Lane, discussion and a possible vote. I think this one is fairly straightforward, we do have a letter. Here we go. We have a letter from our building official in town that is supporting the cause here.
So I would make a positive, a, a, a motion to make a positive recommendation to town council to support a one-year extension of the license for Hometown Country View LLC, also known as Country View Estates, at 213 Hurst Lane.
Perfect. We have a motion. Alan has seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous? We're good? Agenda item 7F, recommendation to town council on renewal of license for Helger Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC, AKA Coelho Quarry, located at 1764 Crandall Road, action and discussion, I'm sorry, the action is a discussion and a possible vote. So we also have a document here, excuse me.
Okay.
I'm losing my voice. So, so this is a letter also from Mr. Verata, our building official, that, that this operation, that he has gone out, reviewed the operation, that it remains within the scope and limitations of its current town of Tiverton Quarry license, that there's been no violations of the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, land use requirements, or operational restrictions that were observed during this annual inspection, and three, the quarry is in good standing with the town of Tiverton. And so based on that, it is the building official's determination that Helger Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC is compliant with all requirements applicable to its licensed operation. There are no concerns preventing renewal of the quarry license.
In which case, I make a motion.
No, excuse me. I have an issue.
Well, let, let's do a motion in a second, and then have a discussion. So I will move that the, that the planning board make a positive recommendation to town council for a one-year extension of the license for Helger Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC, also known as Coelho Quarry, at 1764 Crandall Road.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? So that we can get to discussion? I will second to get to discussion.
I have a discussion. Last year, when this came up, I spoke with Todd, I don't know if he remembers it or not, just the way it was presented, and I said, a quarry is a quarry, and it doesn't mean bringing in materials, and that is processing. Processing was never allowed in, on that property before, and neighbors had complained about that, and I think they were blown off, like I was blown off, on a couple of the issues with the previous building official. But it was just extraction of gravel, not processing, bringing materials in there to process them. When you tear down a house, or you bring things in there, that is processing. Coelhos was the only, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't want any personalities brought into this, but it's just the principle of it. You said to me, it may be a zoning issue. I don't know if you remember that or not.
Do we, do we have a, do we have the operational definition of what the town of Tiverton Quarry license enables? Do we have that handy anywhere? Like, what are the scope of operations that are allowed by the license, you know what I mean?
So quarry is different than earth removal?
Right.
Quarry is going to be of granite?
Not necessarily. In the past, with the other quarries that we had years ago. But this, but it concerns me, because this is a residential area. I don't want it to be just like the industrial area that we have up on Eagleville Road, and it goes on and on. I mean, if there's some way to rectify it, or to put, you know, but things are happening and.
And I hear what you're saying, that it's the quarry license.
Yes.
Or whichever one it says.
Well, the last one, because the other ones expired. He paid his dues every year, and the other ones, like Jerome, and et cetera, you know, let theirs expire. And that was bringing material out of the areas.
Isn't this an enforcement issue, where the building official should be alerted to the fact that material is being brought onto that site in a way that is inconsistent with our, with our, with our zoning code?
I mean, the, the building official is noting in his letter that no violations of the, during the annual inspection, right? So at that moment in time, there were no violations of the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, land use requirements, or operational restrictions that were observed in that moment in time. Not to say that outside of that moment in time.
Does anybody here that has a statement, besides, whether it came in?
I, I do not, and I'm gonna assume no one in the audience does.
I mean, it's in.
My point, Rosemary, was going to be, I don't know what the original quarry involved, because that can involve some in-state quarries that involve bringing in product from outside and processing.
In this particular case, Mr. Coelho was, you know, just had his quarry, and he didn't use it. It was for, or he did use it, but he retired, and it was dirt. It was not bringing in materials in there to be processed, is what has been happening now. And the neighbors are upset with, I mean.
Can we check, is it possible to check? I don't know when this license is actually up, and whether we have, like, any more?
It's, it's up.
Okay.
It's overdue, actually.
Okay, like?
When, when they get our recommendation, they will have already made a decision at town council.
This was on our agenda last week, so both of these items were both approved pending, pending information from you.
Okay.
You know, meeting all legal requirements.
Is there a way, just, is there a way to check with the building official as to whether or not there have been issues raised by neighbors? Have there been any violations, again, not at this moment in time, but have there been any violations on record?
So I'll ask Tom, if I may, I have a question tonight, besides, is it only allowed to be quarryed, or was there another use that was involved with the site prior to that was allowed?
I certainly don't know the answer to that question.
It was only quarry.
Because if the license is for quarry, so it's that licensing, is there, is there anything else allowed in that site?
No.
But this brings me back to my original question. What, how is a license for quarrying operationally defined? There must be a scope of services that is tied to that license that says you can do X, Y, and Z, but not A, B, and C. And that's, I mean, that should be sort of your source of truth, as to whether or not bringing in materials from outside is allowed, right?
Processing.
The case law tells us that quarrying can include processing materials from outside.
Okay.
Whether, whether this particular quarry involved that as part of its operation, and thus continued as a non-performing aspect of its operation, is a different question, which I cannot answer, and all we have is Rosemary representing to us that Mr. Coelho operated it to process, or take materials out, it then became dirt, and essentially died until people started to bring product into process. So to further investigate this, it's a very fat intensive investigation.
Well, I just don't want it to see, I don't wanna stop it. I mean, I, I don't wanna, you know, cause anything.
It's not proper.
No, it's not, but it's a residential area, and I don't wanna see it look like what's on Eagleville Road, and it would set a precedent, and it'll, it'll bring back some of the other problems we had in the past, of people doing things illegally. But this is the one that, that has paid their freight. Mr. Coelho developed, let me see, Michael's Lane, down there too, at the end of the property. I mean, I went down there many times, I mean.
I'm just trying to get to, like, can we make a positive recommendation, or is there, and I'm trying to look at a map here, is there, is there concern enough that warrants us not giving that positive recommendation, because we believe there to be violations? I, I guess I would have thought, like, I understand from the building official's perspective that this is a, this is a moment in time, but wouldn't there have been some indication of sorts, like, if there was a history of pervasive violation of operation on this?
Was there any complaints to the town council?
Was anything raised during your discussion?
If it got there, if it got out of the building official's office. Yeah.
Let me say this, you saw John Frank two months ago, I think, or last month, whenever it was, telling the fact that they were about to hit their 100 violation mark. If there's been a complaint to that department about anything?
There would have.
They're out there.
Those guys are there, but it was the other guy that was there before.
But this current letter is from the present guy.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Yeah, I know, but Ashley went down there the last time, I think, too.
I did. This is done yearly.
Yeah.
I.
And we did it for a reason.
I mean, you can't, for both of them, they're done yearly.
Yes.
I would have to imagine that if there was something improper, that it would have been raised at some other year in history, going, like, I don't know how many, I've done this, I, I know that you've done this every time that I've, since I've been here, so for the last, you know, three years, you've done this, and I'm sure it was well before that.
Processing wasn't entered into the letters. It was just soil.
Can, can we?
I just, I don't know where, I feel like we're going in a little bit of a.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're trying to solve a problem that we're not gonna solve tonight.
Or, or is there a problem to be solved?
Exactly. I, I think.
The issue of the license.
I think that we.
Hang on, hang on.
Do we stop, do we stop a license presentation to someone who was allowed to have that, based on an, an argument?
based on an argument to a, we don't have standing as this planning board to do a lot of these kind of complaints? I mean, that's where you would go to the actual person who would handle the complaints. And since none have been given, no person showed up to testify, do we really have the right to stand in the way of the license if it's been approved already by the, the council pending us approving it? I mean, it's, I, I feel for them. I know, I, listen, quarries are brutal to our neighbors. But if no one's come forward at all, and it's kind of like, all we have is a letter from one person that's complaining about it, and, listen, I, I sympathize. Trust me, I know a lot of these things. I lived on Highland Road. I know.
I, I completely agree with what you're saying. I think we should go ahead and, and, and approve it.
License, I mean, it's, that can be an argument to send someone out to go take a look.
But would set a precedent, too.
Of denying licenses without really-
Could you, could you send a recommendation with a concern that it was raised?
Like, put an asterisk on it.
That the, the processing part may not have been properly permitted or allowed? And you're asking the council, can this be looked into, you know, before next year's renewal?
I think that's a-
And that way you can-
That's a great idea.
And not just ignore the issue.
So I would, I would amend my motion to include what Ashley just said, that we put language in our positive recommendation, that we do have a concern, and, and that we would like appropriate staff to look into it.
We have an amended motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alan, any other discussion?
Just that I would ask Rosemary if you could have those people maybe, actually, if they have a complaint, actually make a complaint to get it on the record.
I don't know all the people that did. They were questioning, and the past building officials left. And he hung me out to dry to one o-
Well, well, perhaps someone will be watching this video on YouTube and will rise to the, a rise to the occasion.
You know, it was on our agenda. There were all kinds of licenses, and we usually get a heads up if there's an issue with one-
Yeah.
And/or people show up.
And no one did.
And I-
The letter says the quarry is in good standing in the town. That suggests there are no complaints.
Not processing.
No, he says the quarry as an entity.
The entity, the, the going concern.
All right. He's against that.
That's the sentence, Rosemary. That's the context of the sentence.
I can read.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five?
I'll abstain.
Well, how about a, just a-
All right.
A no vote?
No.
Good girl.
Rosemary has nay on that. Okay. All right. Item 7G, general planning board correspondence. Again, just to remind everyone, this is a new standing, basically a consent agenda of sorts here where we will recognize that correspondence has come into the planning office here. We have one from Robert Wulett, who was here before, from North Tiverton, and we have one from a Mr. Mokara. So we acknowledge the receipt and move on. And again, this is receipt of correspondence, not tied to any particular project. Okay. Item 7H, Ed, I'm going to turn this over to you. This is a planning office update on pending projects before I just do that. So again, this was alluded to earlier in the meeting. This is our attempt to, and, and Ed has done a great job verbally updating the board over the last few meetings to this sort of content, which is a basic update about all of the major and minor land developments going on in town, sort of what the scope is, where comprehensive permitting may come into play, the number of units, like, all of that important information. As a board, we are going to take steps to formalize this, and the intent is to use each monthly board meeting to get an update. We will recognize and sort of approve, if you will, this, the, the particular month's version of this. And then the intent is to distribute it accordingly to a number of entities. We will place it on our website, the planning board website. That's part, or the planning board page, which is part of the Town of Tiverton website, so that the public has access to it. We will proactively distribute this to key partners in town, including the water districts, the wastewater district, the school department, other entities as, as, as defined here. So-
Great idea.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna do our part to make sure that above and beyond these public meetings, which are videoed and broadcast, that we're taking additional steps to make sure that our stakeholders and partners and constituents have this information as a source of truth, and we can talk about fact. With that, Ed?
All right, so, thank you, Bill. That was perfect. So what we did as a staff, Ashley, Todd, and I, we came up with this chart. Basically, the idea was to give it something that we can update, you know, periodically. So, you know, give all the statuses of, you know, where the projects lie and what stage they're at. Also, put the time clocks, put the dates that they were certified complete. That way, you have a one-stop shop. Go to the project, you can see where it's at, and you can, you know, understand, you know, what's in front of the planning board, what phase that it's in, if there's anything that you need to, you know, any more information, you can reach out to the planning office and, and figure it out. So basically, all that document is, is just an overview of what's going on in the office and what's in front of the board. It's going to be distributed to all, like you said, all the utility companies, the water, wastewater, the school department, DPW, and basically just inform everybody of what's happening in town and where they stand. We have to update a few more items on this, on this list. So this is only a draft. We have a couple of updates to make from just a, a planning office standpoint in terms of what we're working on that aren't related to applications, like zoning revision, subdivision regulations, hydrology study, e-permitting. And I also want to add just a front page, like, overview, just kind of a brief synopsis of what's in the document, highlighting, this is how many major subdivisions we have, major land developments we have, how many minors we have here, how many administrative subdivisions we have going on. That way, it's a little bit of a brief synopsis, so you don't have to go through the whole thing if you don't want to be overwhelmed and kind of just get a little brief update on the first page. So that's where we're at right now.
Two things. The other thing I like about this is that for both major land developments and minor land developments, you have inserted some-
That's right.
Color commentary about sort of the what it is, the process, so on and so forth. A little bit of a, sort of a 101 guide, if you will.
Because we were, we were concerned about how, you know, sometimes people wonder about the timing of things. You know, what takes so long? Well, sometimes, you know, that's because of the, you know, the process and Rhode Island general laws, and, and the timelines that we've given you are the timelines that we've gotten from Rhode Island general laws. So that way, it's informative, so everybody can understand that this is, this is what it is. And if you have any questions, just refer to-
So knowing that this is drafted, there's still work to do. Is there anything on here that you would just, just want to, other than that, highlight?
At this point, no.
Okay.
Unless there's something you want to highlight, Ashley?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Is there anything missing that you think should be included?
Not based on my review. I know I saw an early draft of this. So I would open it up to the board, though.
But this is, this is a great start, and it's an iterative process, so we'll get better over time.
Yep.
As we, you know, as we get more experience with it, so, but it's, a lot of people are going to appreciate it.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you, Ed.
Great. Thanks to Todd and Ashley as well. They helped out a lot.
Thank you, one and all. All right. Let's move on here. So item 7I, approval of minutes. So we have a couple on the docket here. First up is the minutes from our September 25, 2025 workshop, where there was, is there any substantive comments there? All right, seeing none? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from our September 25, 2025 workshop?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Next, minutes from our October 7, 2025 regular monthly planning board meeting. Did anyone have any substantive comments? Okay, seeing none? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of our September 7, I'm sorry, October 7, 2025 planning board regular meeting. Alan with the second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Finally, minutes from our October 30, 2025 workshop. Any comments of substance? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of our October 30, 2025 workshop?
Second.
Stu with the win. All those in favor?
I'll abstain, I think I've accepted one.
Okay. And Alan abstains. So we have Cheryl, Dick, Rosemary, myself, and Stu with the yes, and Alan abstaining. All right. Planning board, item 7J, approval of the Tiverton Planning Board 2026 annual calendar and special meeting calendar. I can't believe it is this time of year where we are doing that again, so-
I'll make a motion to approve both the regular annual calendar and the special meeting calendar.
Great. We'll get a second just to open it up for discussion?
Second.
Dick with the second?
Discussion.
Okay. Let's open it up. Rosemary?
Yeah, I think we need December 2, 2025, not 2026, on the approval dates on both of them. And footnote.
Oh, down there. The, the hold for the date there. Yep. Great call.
Your name's going on it.
Yeah, no, I, Ed, at this point, I totally missed that in the photo.
Yeah, I missed it too.
Thank you, Rosemary.
You're welcome.
Just a note, November 10 is the second, is not, is the second Tuesday, election day. We skipped over that. So we've reserved our spot for November 10.
Okay, so that's the, the one curve ball there. Okay. This is great. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Great. Finally?
Motion to adjourn?
No, just super quick, 7K. Cheryl, update from the Tiverton Zoning Ordinance Revision Committee.
So I'll be real quick. Deb Janik is here. She's the chair of our committee. We had a date that the committee was going to expire at the end, end of the year, and Deb is going to be asking for Town Council approval to extend it by just a little bit to finish some projects. So we also put together a project list, not as comprehensive as the planning board one, but at least it's a star. And once it's approved, we can let everyone know what stage the different projects are at and what's coming.
That would be great. Maybe that's something that we can actually get, whoops, get distributed to the board?
Yeah. It'll probably be by the end of December.
Okay. Superb. Any?
Motion to adjourn.
We can ask for a license.
Makes sense. Okay, great. Thank you, Cheryl, for your continued liaisonship there. All right. Seeing nothing else, Rosemary?
What time's your phone say? To be exact. Motion to adjourn at 10:35.
Privilege motion. All right. There we go. Thank you, one and all.